Good evening, and thank you for attending and viewing the April 5th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. Our first item on our agenda this evening is a land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Weot tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Weot language as gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past action by local, state, federal, and government remove the Weot and indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Weot community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. If you would like to, please join us for the flag salute. And as Vice Mayor Matthews shared at our last meeting, she is not here this evening because she will be observing the first night of Passover. And so will the city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember White. Councilmember Stillman.
Present.
Vice Mayor Matthews is absent, but we do have a quorum.
So if you wish to make a public comment during the meeting tonight, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. And if you were hoping to speak during the first early oral communications period, we do use our card system. So we'll take the first four here in person, and then we'll move to Zoom. And if there's not a lot on Zoom, we'll go back to in-person for that first 15-minute period. If you're logged onto Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on. Or if you are on the phone, please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. And when it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial star six to unmute yourself. For each item, we will be taking in-person public comment first and then move to the online comments. We will not be going back and forth. So if you want to comment, please line up at the podium or raise your electronic hand as soon as public comment is being accepted for that item. All right, we have numerous ceremonial matters this evening. And so our first item is going to be a certificate of appreciation for Julie Vassad Elcock for her 14 and a quarter years of service to the Arcata City Planning Commission. So this will be read by Councilmember White.
That's right. All right, so this certificate of appreciation for Julie Vassad Elcock for her 14 and a half years of service to the city of Arcata, whereas Julie Vassad Elcock served the community of Arcata for 14 and a half years in two terms of service on the planning commission, the first running June 2006 through July 2015, and the second running November 2018 through March 2023. And whereas Julie has served both as chair and vice chair in addition to commissioner. And whereas Julie was balanced in her review of matters before the commission and was known for her ability to listen openly and balance all evidence before making decisions. And whereas Julie was always prepared, having committed the time to study the agendas and the packets, sometimes with a fine-tooth comb. And whereas Julie returned to the commission because her dedication to the community and knowledge of the planning process was invaluable to the long-range planning work involved in the general plan update. And whereas Julie's vast knowledge of housing markets, real estate, and development combined with her proactive, solution-oriented approach to the commission's work was an asset and a benefit to the planning process and the projects and plans approved by the commission. And whereas we appreciate all she gave back to this community, and she will be missed. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Arcata hereby expresses its appreciation to Julie Vassad Elcock for serving the people of Arcata for 14 and a half years. We wish her all the best and commemorate her release from duty as of March 6, 2023, dated April 5, 2023, and signed by our mayor, Sarah Schaefer. Thank you.
All right. And Julie, we're sorry she couldn't be here tonight, but she did email the following comment to share with the council and the community. I truly loved being on the planning commission and being a part of and having a say in how the city of Arcata is recreating itself. When I think about it after all these years, it's time for new voices, opinions, and perspectives to be heard. I feel confident that our new and improved planning commission will do a great job for Arcata.
Well, Julie, if you're out there listening, thank you so much for your service. All right, our next item, we have a certificate of appreciation for Vanessa Metz for her 21 years of service on the City of Arcata Wetlands and Creeks Committee. And so the city council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes and thanks Vanessa Metz for her 21 years of service on the Arcata Wetlands and Creeks Committee. As a water quality expert in her professional capacity, Vanessa brought her expertise to her role on the committee to provide valuable insight on countless projects and policy recommendations. She has always demonstrated and dedicated passion for protection of Arcata's wetlands and creeks over her years of service. In addition to her strong technical background, Vanessa has a keen eye for detail and contributed as a thoughtful editor to several of the city's written planning documents, both large and small. The council expresses its sincere appreciation for her guidance, support, and work to benefit our entire community. So thank you, Vanessa.
I'm not going to be gone altogether. I'm going to still come as a, not as a committee member, though. But I do want to say that it was an honor to serve on this committee for 21 years. I'm only leaving because I, ah, gasp, moved out of Arcata. And so I learned a lot, and I really appreciated the opportunity to participate in all of these discussions that we had in the committee. Thank you.
All right, and then we have one more certificate of appreciation for Sue Cashman for her 11 years of service on the Arcata Transportation Safety Committee, and this will be read by Councilmember Stillman.
A certificate of appreciation presented to Sue Cashman. Sue Cashman was appointed to the Transportation Safety Committee on November 16, 2011. During her tenure, Sue provided valuable input on the city's bicycle and pedestrian improvement projects, policies related to bicycles and pedestrians. She participated and represented the Transportation Safety Committee at various public meetings on many city projects, such as Rails with Trails, the Foster Avenue Extension, the Annie and Mary Trail Project, and the Old Arcata Road Project. She also provided key insights and feedback on bicycle infrastructure on city streets. The city council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes and thanks Sue Cashman for 11 years of service to the people of Arcata on the Transportation Safety Committee. The council expresses its sincere appreciation for her contributions and selfless work to benefit our entire community. It is dated April 5, 2023. It's signed by Mayor Schaefer.
After listening to 11 years of public comment, it's my turn. And what I would like to say is, I can't help but note how capable and responsive and good at multitasking the staff members I've worked with are, and I really hope to appreciate them.
Our next item is a proclamation and recognition of 2023 Godwit Days Spring Migration Bird Festival, April 13 to 16, 2023. And this will also be read by Councilmember Stillman.
In recognition of Godwit Days 2023, the Spring Migration Bird Festival, which will be April 13 through the 16th at the Arcata Community Center. Whereas about 85 million Americans enjoy observing, photographing, or feeding wild birds, and in 2011, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service study found that bird watchers contributed about $32 billion to the U.S. economy. And whereas birding is the 15th most popular outdoor activity, just below bicycling. And about 18 million birders take trips exclusively to commune with other birders or to count birds by sight or sound. And whereas Godwit Days Spring Migratory Bird Festival showcases the area's rich diversity of birds, normally attracting tourists from all over the United States, and makes Humboldt County a birding destination. And whereas Godwit Days has attracted over 300 registered participants in past years, and over 50% of whom came from out of the area. And whereas ecotourism continues to be an important contributing segment of the North Coast economy, Humboldt Bay, its river estuaries, its region's mountains, conifer forests, rugged ocean coastline habitats, offers a variety of bird species for viewing that surpasses the total species count of 40 states and 10 provinces of Canada. Now hereby be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes Humboldt County's business and residents who are participating in the 2023 Godwit Days Spring Migration Bird Festival, as well as future birders visiting the Pacific North Coast. And may they be inspired to migrate back, just as the birds have been doing for centuries. Dated April 5, 2023, signed by Mayor Schaefer. And Godwit Days was actually started by the city of Arcata. So Bob Brown is going to accept.
And I'm wearing a couple hats tonight. This is the first. So just as an update, I was here in 2019, accepting the same proclamation. In 2020, we had to cancel the event because of COVID. 2021 and 2022, we actually had a virtual bird festival event where more than 100 people showed up online for those things. Just a couple statistics so far for this year. It's exciting that we're doing it live again. We've reduced it from a week to three days, four days? Four days. But we currently have 256 registrants. 152 of those are from Humboldt County. Over 100 are from outside Humboldt County, and that includes 36 from out of state. So we have registrants that are coming from Florida, Michigan, New York, Oregon, Texas, Washington, Wisconsin, and British Columbia. So quite an international event now. We have 17 sold-out trips with more than 70 birding events total. And anyway, 514 of those of 760 spaces have been taken, so there are still some spaces left if you wanted to do some birding. But anyway, on behalf of the Godwit Day Board, just thank you again for the city of Arcata for your support.
Right, our next item is proclamation and recognition of the Week of the Young Child, April 1 through 7, 2023. And this will be read by Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
The Week of the Young Child. Whereas North Coast Children's Services and other local organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the Week of the Young Child from April 1 through 7, 2023. And whereas Head Start and Early Head Start programs nationally serve over 1 million low-income children up to five years old, with North Coast Children's Services programs serving over 600 children locally. And whereas North Coast Children's Services, founded as a parent cooperative in 1969, has served young children in our community for over 50 years. And whereas North Coast Children's Services, Head Start, and Early Head Start, and state-funded programs, support the neediest children and families. The program's success rests in the leadership of parents and support from local businesses, municipalities, community members, and neighbors. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities and literacy programs that can provide a foundation of learning for children in Arcata and throughout Humboldt County. And whereas teachers and others who make a difference in the lives of young children in Arcata deserve thanks and recognition, and public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to their futures. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes the Week of April 1 through the 7, 2023, as the Week of the Young Child, and encourages our community to make an investment in early childhood education, because early years are learning years. And today, we have the executive director of North Coast Children's Services, Rodney, oh, Rodney, I'm going to destroy your last name. Oyin, all right, thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you for recognizing the Week of the Young Child and the early childhood profession. It's been a challenging time, but you know, with the support of the city and members of the community, it's what allows us to continue the work we do. So thank you. Appreciate all your support.
Thank you.
Okay, and our last ceremonial matter tonight is a proclamation and recognition of Sexual Assault Awareness Month, which is April 2023. So whereas sexualized violence affects children, youth, adults, and elders of all genders from all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, with public health and social justice implications for every person in Arcata. And whereas staff and volunteers of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team provide 24-hour service to survivors and their significant others, and encourages every person to end sexualized violence by providing prevention education and awareness, raising programs throughout Humboldt and Delmarke Counties. And whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, but can, through collaboration and partnership, work together to support those impacted, improve responses, and ensure that survivors are not revictimized. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata reaffirms its commitment to the North Coast Rape Crisis Team and its vision, a world without violence, and acknowledges April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And we have executive director of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team, Amanda LeBlanc, here to accept.
Thank you so much for your continued support of the Sexual Assault Awareness Month and the work of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team. We are truly a collaborative agency who serves over 300 survivors and their families just in Humboldt County alone in the past year. Our work isn't possible without our partner agencies, including law enforcement, the district attorney's office, tribal organizations, sexual assault nurses. But in Arcata, one of the highlights is that we work at Arcata High School with the Checkit Club that meets weekly, and they're actually doing a movie night tonight, so I have to go to that. But they are working to end sexualized violence on their campus through education and advocacy and bystander intervention strategies. And I also want to mention that we are the Seeds for Change co-op recipient this month, so please round up at the co-op for the North Coast Rape Crisis Team. And we have moved to Arcata. So our new office is at 425 Ice Street, next to Sammy's and the Goat, and it is open for business. Please stop by. We would love to have people come by and see our healing space at 425 Ice Street. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Amanda. All right, so that takes us to our next section of the agenda, which is going to be a report by commission committees. And you're going to put your other hat on here, Bob, and we're going to receive an annual report from the Wetlands and Creeks Committee.
I haven't gotten a hat. I've been on the committee for a long time and still looking for that. But I want to thank you again. The report is in your staff packet. We've had a couple people that have resigned, Vanessa, now, so this is part of 2023. Will also be resigning. We'll have one opening. I did want to mention, as you look at the front cover, that we've been, as a committee, for 30 years. We have our environmental services department liaisons, both Emily and Morgan, and of course Bella. And have I not said yet that they're a great team to work with? Anyway, moving on, I did want to bring attention on page two, that since the Open Space and Agricultural Committee was dissolved, we've also been looking at those issues as well as a committee. We have our committee goals for this last year, which are still valid for this coming year, so we'll enjoy continuing working on those goals. We did combine an additional goal that looks at Jacoby Creek, Gannon Creek, the Creeks Management Plan, and Jolly Giant Creek all together. So we'll be spending a lot of time on the creeks this year. And just pointing out again, Jolly Giant Creek Rehabilitation Plan, especially with urban stormwater, that's something that, you know, this city really needs to address as far as the urban pollution that goes into that. Item C on page three talks about the general plan elements. I know that's an issue that the council is intimately working with, and we've worked with David Loyah on the Gateway Area Plan, the Open Space Element, the Resource Conservation and Management Element, and the Local Coastal Program. So we've had, provided community development with our input with that. Item D is the management of city-owned wetlands and creeks, and I won't go through the details on each of those, but have I mentioned that we have a great environmental services staff? And then public outreach, this is really important. We don't get a whole lot of public output or input, but we do have some on particular items. And I think it's really vital when we do have the public come and look at some of the agenda items that we deal with. And then we do have our Measure A, Special Tax Expenditure, what we've been focusing on, which is the creek plans. And have I mentioned yet that environmental service staff is great to work with? And any items that they propose for funding in this upcoming budget related to wetlands and creeks would be money well spent. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. We might pull you back up for some questions if the council has any questions. But thank you for your, you know, continued service on this committee. You guys provide great feedback, and just thank you for all the work that you do. And we're looking forward to seeing, you know, you have a vacancy, some new members, and I know we just appointed another new member as well. So very exciting stuff. Any questions or comments from the council?
No questions, because you gave us a great report, but thank you and the entire committee for your service.
And thank you for acknowledging staff several times, that you really appreciate them. Thank you very much, because we agree, or I agree.
Agreed. All right, that takes us to early oral communications. So this is a, oh, okay, I should read the script. City Council Values Comment. This is our 15-minute time period that allows people to address the council on matters that are not on our agenda this evening. So please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements and support a request that require council action will be set for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers will be limited to two minutes, and there will be also be a time for public comment specifically on each agenda item, and then again at the end of the meeting under item number 12. So please make your way to the podium if you have one of those cards, or if you are on Zoom, please press star nine. So we'll take the first four here, and then we'll take the next four on Zoom. And if there's more time in this 15 minutes, this is the only time we'll go back and forth. So we'll come back to our public. All right, take us away.
Hi, my name is Joanne McGary. I come here often, and I talk about being visionaries for everyone, including the people on the dais and the people on staff and people in the community. And I really appreciated the public session about sea level rise and Gwen Shaughnessy acknowledging my visionary comments. And I really think the human component of what we know about what's going on in our world is really important, as much as the science and statistics and this and that. So one of my volunteer jobs is delivering by wagon the eco-news by the North Coast Environmental Center. And this month's issue is, cover story is, asking the question of young people, how do you imagine your future? And they interviewed just a few people in Eureka, in Eureka High at the environmental club or such about what, I have to put my glasses on. What do you want the world to be like in 50 years? If you could change one environmental thing, what would it be? I'd like to suggest that the city of Arcata consider, in our visionary work, reaching out to the students and the young people in our community about what they want Arcata to look like in 50 years. Because if they continue to live here, it will be their community and not ours, or at least not mine. And I'm thinking Earth Day's coming up, and I just am throwing this out there. Maybe the city of Arcata puts out to the young people of our community an essay contest or some sort of response contest where they can, through art or writing or oral presentation, let us know what they want to see our Arcata, our Arcata, look like in 50 years. So think to the future, the seventh generations, and thank you for all you do about listening to me. Thank you.
Jim Becker, hello to staff and council. The question is not if infill will be built, the question is when it will be built and what it will look like. Many people have spoken on citing setbacks, step backs of the future infill in relation to the existing neighborhoods. In addition to the Gateway District, infill opportunities exist throughout Arcata, and more will be addressed in two years. With structures up to seven stories, will they respect the quality life of existing neighborhoods, or will the solar shading be ignored in favor of maximum density? What will be the function of L Street, a primary active transportation corridor through the heart of the Creamery District, from Alliance Road to Seminole Boulevard? Will the open spaces be reduced to a truck route or enhanced into a linear park? The Arcata's Transportation Safety Committee has stated numerous times the greater use is a linear park. The local Sierra Club North group recognizes the value of these open spaces and endorses the designation of L Street Corridor as a linear park. Nearly 600 people have signed a petition in support of the linear park and to abandon the K&L Cuplet. Across the nation, rail banking has served to create a vast active transportation network. Today, many cities are seeking out existing undeveloped corridors to establish linear parks. The L Street pathway is in the heart of the active transportation artery from Cal Poly south to the Arcata Martian Wildlife Sanctuary. The corridor is a vital segment of the Humboldt Bay Trail, the link between the future Great Redwood Trail and Annie and Mary's Trail, running from Arcata to Blue Lake. L Street is a diamond and rough, consisting of a pathway and a right-of-way, which is also established. The overall footprint can be increased by rail banking the existing right-of-way. A greenway passing through infill, the corridor will be, serve as a linkage from walkable nearby neighborhoods to destinations throughout Arcata and beyond. As a hub for numerous users along the pathway, L Street is the ideal location for a linear park, and I hope you'll continue to consider that. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name's Glenn Caldwell. I live in the Sunset area of Arcata, own property there. Recently, my social media has been blowing up with, your neighborhood is at risk of being rezoned for high-density housing. So, trying to digest all this, you know, I follow the Gateway cautiously optimistic about that effort, see the need, don't want us to have sprawl, support infill. This seems to be coming from one of our new planning commissioners, it seems. It's hard to keep up with everything because things are now coming kind of fast and furious on an accelerated schedule, it seems. Initially, it started out, oh, a neighborhood here, a neighborhood there, let's rezone it high-density. We can, you know, lots over 6,000 square feet, we can put up the four-story buildings, we can encourage mini-marts and, you know, businesses, so on and so forth. I live in the Sunset. The current policy of encouraging ADUs, which I support, has had a pretty big effect on that neighborhood. It's always been a crowded neighborhood with vehicle traffic and cars. You cannot typically find a parking space on my street these days. It's kind of puzzling to understand what additional high-density zoning, making these zoning changes, which now I guess we're talking about six neighborhoods in Arcata, so it seems to be kind of morphing and growing. And this is recently, over the last month. It's alarming. I urge the council to take slower steps. The last general plan update took four years. Now we're trying to do it by June. Please seek public input on this. It's a bit disturbing to have your zoning changed, kind of seemingly randomly. I don't know that there's that many parcels that will be affected, but yeah, it's a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. And just a reminder, folks, items that are not on the agenda, we will be discussing the general plan this evening. So, okay, thank you. Take it away.
Yes, good evening. I'm Fred Wise. During the week of the young child, I'd like to comment on one of the jewels of Arcata, that is, North Coast Children's Services. I was on the Board of Directors for about 10 years, was the Board President for seven years. They are recognized in California and the western states as one of the exemplary programs of Head Start. They started, as we know, as a parent-run childcare cooperative, now have over 220 employees. They have 31 facilities in Humboldt and Delmarque Counties. Their budget is $13.5 million, which goes to salaries. This is income, it's not, might correspond to $50 or $100 million operation for a manufacturer. It's federal and state funds, that is, money from out of the area, stays locally, has a big impact on this area. They have partnered to assist close to 10,000 children and families of children over these years. In 50 years, there's been hundreds of dedicated employees. I will specifically mention several, Kathy Montane, the Executive Director, over 40 years, Sadiq Kilkenny, he was the Director of Head Start for almost as long, and Pam Rex, as Human Resources and doing everything person for about 40 years. I'll also mention Sue Williams, who organized the Pastels on the Plaza fundraiser event for North Coast Children's Services. It's believed that this is the first Pastels on sidewalks event in the world. Started in 1987, started here in Arcata. The, their main office is in the Purple Building across from the Creamery at Ninth and L Streets. If the L Street/K Street Cuplet concept is what the council selects for the Gateway Plan, as opposed to a linear park, there will be semi-trucks and delivery trucks rolling by North Coast Children's Services door 20 feet away. Thank you.
Thank you. We took our first four here. We're going to check online. I don't know how many comments we have online, and then we can come back to you Thursday.
All right, our first online comment is Jane. Go ahead, Jane.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the council, or the City Council, for scheduling the Sea Level Rise Joint Study Session held March 28th, and for having such excellent panelists. And I appreciated that you included the questions I submitted in the packet. I have several disappointments, however. First, there was no time for oral communications or the addressing of questions from the public at the end. Second, for some reason, the study session was required to end at 8:30, although historically both City Council and the Planning Commission often stay longer. And thus even David had to skip some of the questions the city listed in the packet because of concerns about time constraints. Mine didn't get specifically addressed. Third, neither City Council nor Planning Commission members had or really took the opportunity to discuss the implications of the expert testimony for the city's development plans for the waste treatment plant or the Gateway Area Plan, and particularly with respect to the coastal zone. I'm hoping that you consider ensuring that the time and opportunity are provided for such discussion. It currently does not appear on the Planning Commission's proposed accelerated schedule. It would be most regrettable if we, as a city, ignore this Sea Level Rise information in our plans for population growth and high-density development. I'd like to hope that we plan in more than 20-year segments. We should plan for our infrastructure to last far into the future and not waste public or private funds for projects that will be guaranteed to fail over time, when we should know better. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next comment is Lee. Go ahead, Lee.
Hi, I'd also like to thank you for, for having the experts on Sea Level Rise at the last meeting. And I also would like to get some clarity on the high-density, and the other neighborhoods, which we've been hearing a lot about. We talk about transparency, and I think we need some more transparency on this. It's quite concerning. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's no additional online early oral communications.
All right. We'll be able to take two more in-person public comments. If there are folks, please come on up.
Dave Mazur from Arcata. Yeah, I'd like to address the fact that the city last Friday filed a complaint for declaratory relief regarding Measure M, which flies the earth flag at the top of city flagpoles. And we knew this was coming, this was expected, and I know that the council, in a meeting after the election, went ahead and said, yes, the voters want to see the earth flag on top, so we'll go ahead and do that. And that at the time, they were also aware that there would likely be a motion of this sort filed by the city in order to find out, I mean, kind of the idea of it, it was a declaratory relief motion, and the idea of it was to find out, okay, these people passed, the people of Arcata passed a ballot initiative to fly the earth flag at the top of city flagpoles. We also know there are ordinances, state and federal. Where do we stand on this? What do we do? And that was my understanding, and I believe the councils, or at least some members of the councils, understanding of what was going to happen. And we, the proponents of the measure, expressed our desire to cooperate with all that. When it was actually filed, I will read you just the very end of it, which is, whereof the plaintiff, which is the City of Arcata, the proponents are the defendants. Wherefore plaintiff demands judgment as follows, a declaration from the court that the city has a duty as a general law city to comply with the California Military and Veterans Code and the United States Code, and Measure M violates both California Military and Veterans Code. So, the, I know that perhaps this is necessary in terms of the wording of a motion like this, but also it gives a strong impression that the council and the city is opposed to having the earth flag on top, even though it was voted in. So I just wanted to make you folks aware of the fact that that had been filed and that that's what it said. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right. Any more in-person public comment? Okay. Then that will take us to our next item on the agenda, which is the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion of any of these items, and if discussion is required, that item can be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. Item A is to approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of March 1st, 2023. Item B, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of March 15th, 2023. C, bi-weekly report on disbursements. D, approve the project plans and award a construction contract for the Redwood Park Improvement Project, Phase 1 to Mobley Construction, DBA, MCI, and the amount of $349,003.00, base bid plus additive alternative number one, and authorize the city engineer to increase the contract amount by up to $69,800.60, 20% for total, for total amount not to exceed $418,803.60, to allow for any unforeseen contingencies, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Item E, approve the purchase of one Align Region X Street Sweeper. Sorry, that's quite the name there. And award a contract to Owen Equipment in the amount of $353,731.70, including tax, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Adopt Resolution Number 223-45, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, authorizing approval to apply for the California Energy Commission 1% interest loan and find the project exempt from CEQA pursuant to California Code of Regulations Title 14, Section 15301. Item G, adopt Resolution Number 223-46, authorizing the execution of the certifications and assurances, and authorized agent forms for the Low Carbon Transit Operation Program for the following project, A and MRTS, free fares for the amount of $14,000. And Item H, request the annual engineers' report and preparation of notices to declare the city's intention to continue to levy and collect assessments of the existing assessment districts, to include Mad River Parkway Business Center Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, Windsong Subdivision Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, and James Creek Meadow Landscape Maintenance Assessment District. All right. Are there any members of the council that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull Item A and Item G.
Okay.
Item E, please.
And Item E. All right. Are there any members of the public that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Or members of staff? All right, so then can I get a motion to approve Items B, C, D, F, and H?
So moved.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Stillman.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember White. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries unanimously. So that will take us to Item A, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of March 1st, 2023. Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank our city clerk for all the additional time that she spent on amending those minutes, and I really appreciated the details. That was it. Thank you.
So I'll move for approval of the minutes of the City Council for March 1st, 2023.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on Item A. And yes, thank you, Bridget, as you're furiously note-taking away over there. We do appreciate it, and the public appreciates it, and the wide world of the internet appreciates it probably too. So, all in favor, or I guess, do I have to take?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to take public comment. Any comment on Item A? No, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries unanimously, Item A. Okay, that takes us to Item E, approve the purchase of our street sweeper. Go ahead with your questions on that one.
Thank you. I just had a quick question. It says in the packet that the city tried to get an electric vehicle but was unable, but it didn't say why. So I was just curious as to why we had to go this other direction.
Great. So as the council knows, we, your body approved the purchase of a street sweeper in our mid-year budget update, just a couple council meetings ago. And this is a different time for vehicle requests, and we're coming to you at mid-year for this vehicle request, as we've heard a lot of interest from the community and the council on having a more reliable and able-to-be-maintained street sweeper. So we had been searching for quotes for both a lightweight diesel street sweeper and an electric street sweeper in keeping with our Green Fleet's policy and really looking to shift our fleet towards non-fossil fuel-powered vehicles. We have seen in our recent vehicle purchases from the last two years, we have submitted purchase requests for an electric truck, several hybrid vehicles. We have been successful at getting some hybrid Mavericks. All our recent, all of our other purchases for electric vehicles and hybrids have either been long-delayed or canceled. And so there are a lot of supply chain challenges that we're still working through in order to secure electric and hybrid vehicles. The need for the street sweeper has been there for quite a number of years due to budget constraints. We're, you know, just being able to come to you with that. The lightweight street sweeper that is diesel is less than half the cost of the electric version. And that is, that cost is a factor. The delivery time and supply chain challenges are the main factor, in that we hope that we can meet this need a lot quicker. Additionally, the lightweight street sweeper does not require a commercial license to drive, and we've had a hard time retaining someone in the street sweeper position that has that commercial license in order to drive the heavier vehicle. So the lightweight version will enable us to more have that street sweeper on our streets more regularly, and be able to meet our air quality permits and requirements, and meet that community need. Thanks.
Thank you. I know it's a, it's a priority for all of you to convert our fleet, so I just thought the public would appreciate, and me, to know what was holding us up for this. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve Item E.
Second.
So we have a motion, a second. Is there any public comment on Item E regarding the street sweeper? All right, seeing no public comment, we'll go ahead and vote on Item E. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And that will take us to Item D, looking at the, oh, yeah, the fare program. Yeah, that's you. Sorry, go ahead.
Item G.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. No, I just am really looking forward to promoting that, and I'm looking forward to writing it this summer. I am really happy to hear that, you know, Arcata-Mad River Transit is going to be doing this free program, and I'm super excited that maybe that will be expanded someday. this free program, and I'm super excited that maybe that will be expanded someday. Thanks.
And it's a great opportunity to ride one of our awesome new electric buses free of charge. So, there you go. And that will be for the month of June?
And July.
And July. Okay. So that's very exciting, a month of June and July, so enjoying your, your summer rides. All right. Are there any public comments on this item? Yes, come on up.
Hi, my, my name's Joanne McGarian. While I appreciate, again, the July, June and July freebie on the Arcata bus system, I would hope that when students are here in session and maybe in more inclement weather months, we could try and get bus-riding freebies as well, because I think what I really want to encourage people is to realize how great it is to not have to drive your own individual car, whether it's rain or shine. And so while I appreciate two months out of the year being able to take the bus for free, because there's nothing like fumbling for change. I lost a quarter yesterday on the bus, fumbling for change. But I look forward to a day, actually, when public transit is free and nobody has to stop at the, at the driver's side to put money in a thing, and it's always a delay too when people do that. So the two months of this year will be great to have that free bus thing, but may it change maybe in the future and try and get it in another time of year, at least one of those months, I would like to suggest. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion to approve item G?
All right. So move to approve item G, and I just want to comment, eventually you won't have to put money into the meter, you'll be able to just tap, unless you only have money, and that's the only way you can possibly do it. So I move for item G.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes unanimously, and that takes us through our consent calendar. Thank you, everybody. All right. That will take us now to old business, which is item A, to receive a report on the Mad River Community Hospital's special considerations. And can we start with a staff report from Community Director of Community Development, David Loyah?
Let me get my presentation set up here. All right. Good evening, council and public. This item was brought forward as a request of a council member to find out more information about the Mad River Community Hospital's development constraints and what the process would be to, to amend those development constraints. And so I wanted to provide for you, you know, what the current regulations are for those properties, sort of the history of how we got there and what the process would be to change those, as well as a couple of alternative options that are available for the hospital to, to start with any development plans that they may have in advance. I wanted to be clear that this is not a, you know, decision-making item. There won't be any changes to the land use regulations on the hospital. This is just an informational. I also wanted to identify that council did receive a couple of communications on this particular item. I believe you received those as blue folder items, and I think most of you received those as, as emails in advance, and so those are available to you. So I'll just walk you through, starting with the, the reason why and what these development constraints are. I've got here an image, you know, that harkens back to 2000, when we adopted our general plan, and I just wanted to acknowledge the handwriting of Maggie Merchi, our admin assistant, who will, will always be loved by the, by the city of Arcata and the Community Development Department. So in the final EIR for that general plan update, you know, we evaluated the impacts of the planning effort on the environment. So it's a, an interesting exercise, because you're not actually building anything, you're not actually creating any changes to the environment at that time, but you're establishing policy that would allow for development of, you know, these, these properties, and, and those could potentially have impacts. And so what we did within the general plan program, EIR, was we, we had some impacts that we had to develop mitigation programs for, and then we had some impacts that we identified in advance and amended the project description to incorporate those mitigations into project measures. And so I apologize, this is not as big as I thought it would be on the screen. I should have tested that before. Rookie move here, apologize. But in that general plan, EIR, we basically wrote that the Mad River Hospital site is designated, at the time, public facility and agricultural exclusive, so it had mixed zoning, and will be re-designated so that the entire site was public facility. This was identified as a significant environmental impact on agricultural resources, and in order to offset that impact, you see on the third line there, beginning in the middle of the paragraph, "Hospital development should retain 50% open space, have adequate provisions for site retention of stormwater, be compatible in scale with surrounding uses," and so on and so forth. And so in the EIR, we said we needed to have this, and so how did we do it? In the mitigation measure or in the, the evaluation of the level of significance, which was amended a couple of times, it ended up reading that the farmland conversion is considered a potentially significant impact, and that includes potential conversion of pasture land for resource enhancements, being planned for the Hunt property, et cetera, et cetera, and the Mad River Hospital site. Resulted in a special consideration in the implementation measures housed within the, the general plan, and under that table LU or Land Use -8, specific consideration was given for the Mad River Hospital, and it included provision for 50% open space, which could allow for the continued productive resource uses of the site. And so in that general plan, EIR, which was certified, adopted, and formed the basis for special considerations that were included in both the general plan and the, and the land use code, which implements the general plan, you know, this was the basis for it. It was determined to be a significant environmental impact, and this was sort of the way that we were attempting to, to mitigate that. That resulted in the 2001 project measure that was incorporated in the general plan that reads, "With respect to the Mad River Hospital, hospital development should retain 50% contiguous open space, have adequate provisions for onsite retention of stormwater, be compatible with scale and surrounding uses, provide open space easements to the city or land trust, and limit extent of impervious surfaces, for example, parking lots, as much as possible through a planned development." That was then codified in the zoning code. So we have a general plan that says this, and then we have a zoning code, the land use code, which expanded on this and was modified. The zoning code was finally adopted in 2008 that implemented that, and it has retained within it the, you know, specificity that's in the, the general plan with a lot more detail. In addition, the land use code established this requirement for a master site plan. The master site plan was to identify the areas that would be held and retained in open space, and if it wasn't approved by the year 2020, then the public facility zoning would revert back to AE. That was the stick, and the carrot was the ability to develop the entire site for public facilities, retaining that 50%, so to speak. In 2006, the, or 2007, I think it was actually, and the hospital came forward, working with a consultant, and brought forward a master plan, and the planning commission adopted the master plan. Master plan was kind of a nebulous concept, it wasn't defined anywhere, and so we worked with the hospital for several years to try and identify and define what would constitute a master plan. There is a lot of information in the record that I'm obviously leaving out that involved the conversations, discussions, ideas about what the master plan would be. I'm showing you the milestones of what the master plan actually was accepted by the planning commission, by the city, to, to meet these requirements in the general plan and the land use code. And this was the map that was attached to that resolution. What this map shows is the Mad River Hospital property, which is, you know, roughly outlined in yellow here. It shows some surrounding lands like Potawat, but the yellow boundaries show the open space areas that were considered for meeting that 50% goal. There's a table that shows that this does constitute 50% of that land area. The areas that are outside of those yellow areas labeled OS 1 through 10 are the areas that were allowed to be developed. Now, this largely comports with the planning work that led up to the general plan, open space requirement, and it shows in a lot more detail the types of development and the, the way that the, the parking lots would be developed and the subdivisions and so on and so forth. And so this, for all intents and purposes, which was adopted in 2007, is the master plan. It was certified or approved by the city as the master plan meeting those objectives outlined in the general plan and the land use code. Now, if you want to develop on the site, there are a couple of ways to do it. The first is to use the master plan and develop according to the areas that are identified as developable. That's the easy button. That's already approved. If you wanted to develop, say, in this open space area, you could replace this area for that area, just swap them around, and that would also be the easy button. That would constitute a revision of the map. They would bring that in and say, we have a revision to the master plan, and the zoning administrator would be able to find that in substantial conformance with the existing master plan, and they could move forward and develop according to that new master plan. We would keep that on record as, as we have the original master plan. That wouldn't require an environmental review. The environmental review is complete, it's done for this work, and it conforms with the requirements that are in the, the original land use code. Now, the hospital has been considering additional development out on the site, and we've had some conversations about what it would take to remove this requirement entirely, or, you know, change the requirement. And so that would require a text amendment to the general plan and the land use code. It would effectively change this LU, table LU8, would modify the language in there, and it would modify it based on whatever the request was of the applicant, Mad River Community Hospital, and whatever was approved by the council at that time. However, because this was a mitigation measure effectively of the general plan, EIR, and those mitigation measures were, were codified and included in these long-range planning documents that we have, that would constitute, removing that or changing that would constitute a general plan and land use code amendment that would also trigger an environmental impact report. Now, we've already established, those prior decision-makers already established, this is an environmental, environmental effect. And so I would recommend that the environmental review go directly to environmental impact report, which would allow for the council to decide to adopt what's called a statement of overriding considerations. What the statement of overriding considerations is, is a statement that you recognize that there is a significant environmental impact that isn't being mitigated, and that you want to approve the project anyway. And so that, that's, that's the ability that you would have with an EIR. There are also some other alternatives for developing new mitigation measures, developing conservation easements, you know, elsewhere outside the city's boundaries, maybe in the green belt. And so there are a lot of alternatives that we can evaluate, but because the measure would be changing and the, the significance of the impact would be retained, the, the hospital would need to conduct an environmental impact report to, to evaluate that impact. Now, it could be focused, you know, on just this impact area or the, you know, relative few impact areas that there might be out there, and so there are ways to streamline it for them. But that is, in summary, the process that would be required to develop more than 50% of the Mad River Community Hospital, if, if that were the desire, the policy desire of the city council. Be happy to answer any questions you might have, what the policy implications might be and those sorts of things, but that's sort of the summary of just the mechanisms required to change the, the land use designation.
Will we have a presentation? We want, we have a presentation now from, or do we want to make a decision? We have the applicant here?
The applicant is here. You may want to take public comment, ask clarifying questions before you make any decisions.
Yeah, I definitely have some questions. All right. So let's open up for questions, because I personally have questions, and I'm sure others do as well, so we can start at the center of the dais with Councilmember Atkins Salazar, and kind of just go down and ask our questions, and then we can take public comment, and then we can go into more discussion if needed.
Great. My, my questions are actually for the applicant, because I understand the process, so I don't know who's here representing Mad River Hospital. Yeah. Would you mind taking, going up to the mic? Not yet, but...
Do I need to do anything? Okay, there we go. Cool. Hi, I'm Gary Reese from SHN, and I'm working with the Mad River Community Hospital folks on this, and yeah, I'd love to answer your questions.
Thank you. So I, I guess the first one that I have is if the master plan was approved in 2007 and there still is buildable space on there, why, why building didn't happen? And then in addition to that, what would be, what is planned for, what's the need for more space and what would be planned for it?
Yeah. I, I would probably have to rely on the Mad River folks to explain why building didn't happen, but, you know, much of what was proposed in that master plan is not what's needed today. You know, market conditions have changed, and I think they would, they really only need a small portion of, of the site at this point for expansion of hospital facilities, and I think they'd like to develop the rest of the site with housing, you know, like workforce housing for medical staff, or housing in general, for whatever the greatest needs are in the community.
Do you, do you have an idea of how much of that 50% of the open space they're wanting to use? Like, all of it, half of it?
Yeah. That, that's a good question. We definitely haven't drawn up any maps or really planned it out in that manner. I think we wanted to address the council at this time to see if you would be willing to allow an application to move forward and be processed by staff for amendment of the general plan, the land use code, and the planned development approval to make changes such as changing the zoning to allow housing, and then also potentially reducing some of these restrictions, like the 50% open space requirement. It, it's important to note that there, you know, there's wetlands and other environmental constraints on there, so there's always going to be some amount of open space, but as far as an exact number that it would be reduced to from 50%, we, we don't have that out this time.
Okay. Those are my only questions. I have thoughts, but I'll save those for after public comment. Thank you.
Yeah.
My, my question could maybe be for David, but you probably know the answer too. So what would happen to the open space requirement and the zoning if Mad River Hospital, if we, you know, decided, no, we don't want to go for this, and they decide to sell off some of these, you know, parcels that exist within the property? I mean, what would, does that zoning go with it? Because if they're separated, how does that 50% work and what would happen in that case?
Yeah. The, so if the, it would kind of depend on, the answer depends on what the decision was. So if you decided to change the zoning, the open space requirements would then be left to what the, the zoning site coverage requirements are for that area, if you wanted to allow for, you know, additional development of the site. I think what part of the question was, had to do with what would happen to the open space requirements if the parcels were sold off, which was part of the reason motivating this master plan process, because it was envisioned originally that these areas would be subdivided and then sold and developed for hospital-related uses. And so in order to ensure that the overall site had 50% open space, this master plan would, would dictate that, and if someone came in to develop, they would have to comply with that, that master plan process. So it really does depend on what direction the council wants to go with, sort of the policy decision, whether to, you know, preserve the open space intact at 50%, regardless of what, you know, is developed or what the zoning changes are allowed, or if you want to allow the zoning to dictate what the open space requirement is, and then accept that you're going to lose the, you know, the mitigation of retaining the open space. But, but if you are interested in retaining that open space overall, then it could be done through this master plan process.
But, so, that's a lot of good information, but, so, so say that we, we up here decide, no, we want to keep the open space. want to keep the open space, we don't want them to develop that, and they say, okay, well, we're not going to be able to develop it, let's just sell off these vacant parcels. Like what happens then and how are those parcels zoned if they are independent from Mad River and bought by another entity?
They would be subject to the master plan.
Any other questions down at this end? That was my main question, so.
So the questions that I had were covered already, but I guess my question then would be what types of services that you intend to put on the site that you couldn't use what's already been allocated?
Are you asking what type of medical facilities or what are you asking exactly?
Yeah. What is it that you are intending that you can't utilize what you have with the master plan with the 50%? And then probably the next question would be, I know you said you didn't know, but is there an ish? Like, is it 50% to 25%? Are you thinking half, all of it? It's hard to make any kind of decision without having some information.
Yeah, and I would point out, you know, all you would be doing at this time is providing direction to allow an application to move forward. So we don't know that information at this time, but you will have ample time to review whatever the application is. You know, go to your planning commission, they give you a recommendation, and ultimately it would come to the council for decisions. So I would say, you know, they'd probably like it reduced to essentially just open space around the environmental constraints such as wetlands, so to the extent possible. You know, there's significant development potential on this site. It's surrounded by development. It's got good access to the highway, you know, it's adjacent to one of the largest public facilities in the city. So this is a great infill development site. And, yeah, you know, if sites like this aren't developed, as you guys have been discussing, I mean, you potentially put pressure on your resource lands around the city, you know, like the Arcata bottom and the forest. So I would say they would like, you know, these restrictions reduced as much as feasible to improve the development potential on this site. As far as medical facilities, I think they have planned to have an expansion kind of just to the north of the most recent addition that was done, and then there's another facility they're working with the county on, but that's all they're aware of at this time. The rest of the property would like to develop with housing, and they could do a lot more of that to help the community if they didn't have the 50% open space requirement.
So are you able to share what that other facility that you're working with the county, with the public at this time?
Yeah, I'll ask some of the folks from Mad River to come up and explain that.
Okay.
Hi, I'm David Neal. I'm the chief executive chief nursing officer at Mad River. We're working with County Behavioral Health on the Mad River campus itself. Just right there, we will have a crisis stabilization unit. We've written a grant, it's been approved by the Board of Supervisors with funds of about $1 million and a half dollars to start the project, and we're looking for the remainder of it to be paid by a grant that's being awarded hopefully in the next few weeks from the state of California. So it will be a crisis stabilization unit for the acutely mentally ill to reduce the impact on our EDs, because right now they all end up in our EDs, both here and at St. Joe's, and this will be a countywide facility. It will be housed on Mad River's campus, but it will be from all over the county, be it law enforcement or whatever that can bring those individuals that are in crisis to where they can get humane treatment outside of being on a gurney in the ED.
Do you have an approximation of how many beds that you're anticipating?
So it has a stabilization unit and a few other, it's around, I can't quote the exact number, sorry, it's been a while since I've looked at it, but it's around 40 beds.
And would that be in addition to what we already have in Eureka, I believe, with?
This is in conjunction with Sepulvedon's. This is, this is what is not provided at Sepulvedon's. This is services that are being provided in St. Joe's ED, which you hear about the violence and the issues that are occurring, happening in my ED with the violence and stuff, because patients are brought, they're put on a 5150. They're kept there until the decision, some new laws that occurred with Wood's new bill of how we handle the 5150s. But rather than landing in the ED, if they're medically stable, they go, they'll go right to this unit where they'll have some time to get stabilized or then have some transition within this unit.
And I guess David had talked about a second option of swapping or revising, it seemed pretty easy, will that?
This is not within what that is. This is actually on the Mad River campus itself, on the existing. So it's more or less heading in this space that's totally outside the zone but right by the hospital.
Okay.
So it's not in this area around that's being talked about. And when this was developed, Open Door was going to have a presence on the campus. There was a long-term care, you know, these are things that we're talking about, building a new hospital, potentially turning the old hospital at some point in time down the road into a long-term care facility. But what was zoned or is in this plan doesn't meet the needs of what we need. I can't attract doctors, there's no housing. It's the first word I always get. So our goal is to develop as much housing, primary, the hospital, the school, the fire station right there that was donated by the hospital for that property. So that's, we really want to just see it expanded.
And you answered my next question, was that the intention is to add workforce housing to this?
Not just workforce. I mean, the polytech needs housing for, you know, individuals and stuff, too, so looking at what we can, and that's as Gary was saying, we're just starting down this path. Doug has a vision and would like to have as much of that 50% reduced and have this developed to where housing is available.
And if we were to do that reduction, would this be something that we could explore of doing a mitigation outside of the property in another place? And would you consider that as, I mean, how does that? Tell me more.
Yeah, the, you know, preservation of agricultural resources is kind of a, you know, tricky subject, because it's not like you can go create, you know, like a wetland. If you want to create a wetland in a non-wetland area, you can do that, but you can't create more ag resources. Typically, you know, establishing conservation easements is an acceptable means of mitigating impacts to ag resources. When we approved the Creekside Annexation, there was a conservation easement requirement that, you know, approximated like five to one. So for every acre of lost ag, there was five acres of conservation easement, and so that's one way to approach it. Also, I just did a quick look at our zoning regulations and the open space requirements there. For residential medium, there's a 40% open space requirement. For residential high, there's a 30% open space requirement. The main difference between those open space requirements and this one is that they wouldn't be required to be contiguous. And then, as Gary had mentioned, there are some, you know, some wetlands on the site, you know, there's, you know, that would be preserved as a contiguous body of open space. It just wouldn't be accomplishing the same kinds of goals for ag preservation.
And that seemed to be one of the objections of somebody who had sent in that they...
Lisa Brown.
Right, thank you. Was that it was not contiguous, thank you.
Well, I'm the councilperson that asked that this come forward, because I've been working with, you know, talked to Mad River Hospital about their concerns, and when you look down in the very far corner, closest to Bridget over there, originally, they were considering a school being there, and that school is North Coast Preparatory Academy, and they were planning on having it down in Lot 6. And that's no longer a possibility or being considered. So I think as, well, we, as time goes by, we have changes, and we really need to look at those changes, and we need to rethink this about how it's going to be for the future. And we need medical services within our community, we need housing for our medical staff, and I just, I just got a text today, there are two doctors, ER doctors, that are looking for housing, and it's very, very difficult to find it anywhere. So I am thinking that we would need to move forward on asking this to go to staff, and I would like to make a motion to do that. Instead of us debating whether we're going to do this or that, I don't, I mean, maybe Kimberly has that expertise, but the rest of us haven't been on the planning commission. So what I would like to move forward is entertain a change in the land use restrictions and allow the applicant to submit an application to city staff to start the process.
I will second that, but I would like to hear public comment.
Yeah, and we, and we will. And so we have a motion in a second, and I will just add in, you know, that I totally agree with you, Councilmember Stillman, and that I know some young people my age that want to move back to the area and are doctors, but are a little worried about being able to find a place to live right away or buy a place or whatever's going on, and so, you know, I know that. And just a couple of things that I would just want to, you know, put in as considerations, just that I know that, and I don't, I'm not assuming that you guys have plans to get rid of it maybe, but that the garden space is really near and dear, I know. I grew up as a child of Mad River Hospital employees, so it's, you know, near and dear to a lot of employees' hearts, and it's great, you know, for patients to be able to say, oh, I'm eating something that was grown in the garden, and the ability for, you know, everybody to take stuff home and have that resource, and so I would really like to see that kept, obviously. And then just kind of wondering in general if there's been any, you know, outreach or work with UIHS, just about, you know, what they think with this going forward and how, you know, that the hospital is working with UIHS to, you know, move forward on this as well and get their feedback on the projects. And so, you know, I totally agree with you, and if you guys don't have anything to add. Opinion-wise, we can open it up for public comment.
I just want to add that the gardens are two acres of land right now, and that's what the gardens are. They feed the employees, the patients, and they also have a farmer's market.
So I do have opinions, but I'd like to wait until after public comment.
Wondrous. Okay, let's open it up for public comment. We'll have three minutes on this one, and so if you wish to make public comment, please line up here, or if you're on Zoom, please raise that hand, so we're good to go. Go ahead.
Hello, Chris Richards. Just a couple of things I'd like to say about this. I totally agree that moving towards expanding the area that the facility can do some of these new things that they're wanting is great, but I would caution, if you let them go forward with an application and it moves towards a zoning change and all of that, that you really pay close attention to the percentage of open space that should be required, especially if you're looking at a big mental health facility, you're going to need to make sure you have, you know, all of that going for it. The other thing is with it bordering the other properties on the back, you have the tribal group that does what they do back there, where the gardens butt together and all that. Seems like if you do anything, you definitely want to guarantee some kind of buffer zone that is open space, that's a guarantee or something along that line. I mean, looks like what they're saying is they'll trade this for that if you didn't do anything, and you could see what you'd end up with that way, but that's the two things that I would say, I would just caution you as you move forward, that you're going to make sure you don't end up with losing a bunch of more open space, garden area, animals, bugs, and all that. Need a place, too, and right now it's doing pretty well with that. So anyway, definitely a balance needed there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'm Fred Wise. I think what we're looking for here is direction, right? Not an actual recommendation, because what's been talked about is too vague to really evaluate. I want to mention a few things. The, we keep talking about 50% open space, the actual special considerations were 50% contiguous open space. There's a real difference. The, I'm not a wildlife biologist or a farmer, but the original intent was to allow for continued agricultural use of that 50%, not little hopscotch areas there. So the question becomes, do you want to honor the work that was done by a previous council in terms of this open space requirement? The special considerations also, quote, "limit extent of impervious surfaces," that is parking lots as much as possible. This plan here, to give you some idea, all the parking spaces in the existing Mad River complex, all of them are 430. All the new stuff, 732. So hopefully that'll all be discarded and will be far fewer parking spaces. If the, if we've learned anything from that Westwood Gardens experiment, where it's, all the buildings are parking with one level of residence on top, please, please, give direction that these buildings should be three stories or four stories to maximize the land use. And in terms of the workforce rents, just building apartments doesn't guarantee anything, doesn't guarantee that people can pay. If there can be some guarantee built into this consideration, I'd be much more amenable to changing the open space requirements, just as we have guarantees for low income. We, you know, we here in Arcata can make guarantees for workforce rents for people who are in the $20 to $30 an hour price range, which a lot of hospital employees are, that they can actually afford in a reasonable sense to rent these spaces. And so again, none of the one level of housing and one level of parking, three or four stories. And as far as the 50% contiguous, this is prime agricultural land, there's a reason why it was set up with these special considerations in the past. And I also ask whether the existing master plan, whether the footprint of this is sufficient or whether it would be a larger footprint than what we're seeing here. Also, the surrounding land is UIHS, not just other housing. There's vast areas of other agricultural land, which would be ideal to have as contiguous to this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Colin Slavy. I also live in Arcata. The previous commenter's comments, I think, are going to reflect mine just a little bit. And some of the considerations that I'd recommend, and just kind of popped up as this discussion was occurring, include that because we're talking about, you know, continuous space for, at least continuous open space, and the fact that Sarah brought up the value of garden space on the parcel or on the, in the area, and the fact that it is prime agricultural land, you know, we were discussing the natural resource constraints, which may include wetlands, but I think that considering the quality of soil in the open space is also something that should, you know, have a high priority. Make sure that the open space, which does exist, can be utilized in some way or form by either natural resources for, as habitat, or as if somebody were so inclined, agriculture land. You know, the ability to cultivate the land around you is, you know, unquestionable, and to create a sense of, you know, presence and community on an area like this, enabling the people who live there to have gardens beyond the small little garden space that's already been established, could really extend the value and make people feel healthy and, you know, dignified. Additionally, I think that the consideration of townhouses, triplexes, duplexes, three-to-four story residential, multiple dwelling units is a fantastic idea, not only because I think the view shed there is broad, you know, this is a big sky area as you're driving down Jane's Road there, but, you know, as long as you consider the design and the form of the, of the development, it could become a beautiful place even with development. And I guess finally, the value of continuous natural resources in open space is wildlife corridors and the ability for things that aren't human beings to get from point A to point B. It enables, you know, a balance between natural ecosystems and environments and human environments, and I think that should be something that is considered if this master plan is revised in any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last call for in-person public comment. We'll move to Zoom, and we will not be going back and forth. All right, Zoom public comment. All right, our first speaker is Lisa. Go ahead, Lisa.
Good evening, councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. This is a near and dear to me, and I believe that the council should not allow Mad River properties to reduce the 50% retention of open to reduce the 50% retention of open space in their master plan. The open space retention was approved by the city council back in 2011, when was the result of a multi-year process, which resulted in the 50% open space agricultural protection for these vital resource lands in exchange for not only Mad River, but UIHS, who actually did preserve their 50% open space and agricultural land, and put it in an easement. Mad River Properties, the, it was pretty much an agreement made on trust. And I feel like that trust is being broken. This was a huge give on the part of the community to come to agreement on this for these particular lands. And it's important to hold Mad River Properties accountable. UIHS had to do it, and they should too, because of the importance of the soils to our community, to the state, really to the country. And so please, I do not have a problem with it being medical-related housing or even other type of housing. But we need to retain the 50%, retain agricultural use, and as much as possible, have it be contiguous. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more online comment?
Yes, our next online comment is Colin. Go ahead, Colin.
Good evening, council members. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I think that the prospect of additional housing on the site holds some promise. I just want to provide a couple of considerations from a transportation perspective. Just to point out that this isn't really in one of the targeted infill zones of the city. Of course, nothing in Arcata is really too far from anything else. But there are, I think, I think some some lax in the safe and comfortable and convenient non-vehicular transportation from this part of the city to the more commercial centers, either Valley West or downtown. And so I would consider, I would encourage you to consider that as you move forward with this application, if you move forward with it. And perhaps to even include neighborhood commercial as as part of any development in order to reduce the need for longer trips. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
All right, and our, what appears to be our last online public comment is Colin User. Go ahead, Colin User. Go ahead, Colin User.
Hello, this is Ken Selwatsky. Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I strongly support the other speakers who said the open space should be maintained as agreed upon. I would hate to say that this possibly speaks of corporate greed. I don't know that it applies, but I don't think, no matter what. And I agree, we have a hard time getting doctors here. Give them fine housing, give the nurses fine housing, anybody who wants to work there, fine housing. But part of that is quality of the open space. And so I highly recommend, as the other speakers have said, hold with the 50%. It should be feasible for them to do. Maybe they don't want to, maybe they want to have bigger development and more. But I don't think that's what Arcata needs at this time. And so I support that, you moving forward with the 50% maintained. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you. And that's, okay, the end of our public comment. I will bring it back to the council for any follow-up comments, questions, or discussion. Let's start, Stacy.
So my assumption is that the folks from Mad River would like a little bit of an inkling on how we feel. So because the process of of going through the EIR will be very expensive. And so, you know, if if we are all adamantly know that we're opposed to it, then I feel like that should be said now, so they have some direction. For me personally, just some thoughts. You know, I realize that this was part of the general plan that was started in 2000. And for what Lisa said, maybe this portion adopted in 2011. And that is quite some time ago. And we are currently working on a new general plan. Things have definitely changed over that time. So I think that's a consideration. It's not so much going back on what previous councils have done, but just recognizing that the world changes, and sometimes we need to change with it. I think that we we definitely need more medical services in our area. Mad River is an important asset to our community, and and housing is as well. So I, I mean, I can't say for sure what I, how I feel without having the results of the EIR, without, you know, the proposal and the master plan. I don't, it's just, you know, too vague to really weigh in on. But I do think that there is a need for more medical and more housing, and I, you know, would consider that.
Thank you, Stacy. I definitely, you know, completely agree with everything that you said. And and just, you know, looking at this, you know, kind of map of at least what's laid out, not that that is what is going to happen. But, you know, thinking about this idea that people have brought up about contiguous open space, and really just seeing that that strip, that's kind of that eight, open space eight area, you know, as as an area to to discuss with UIHS, and how that would interact with the gardens at Potawat as well, and the current garden on Mad River's property, and just, you know, focusing on that space as kind of an open green belt between the two properties. But I'm I'm fully, you know, as as Stacy said, it is kind of hard to conceptualize if there's not a direct plan in front of us. However, I am, I am pro-housing, I am pro-workforce housing, I am pro-everything, you know, medical for our community that we desperately need. And we desperately need housing as well. And so there is a lot of underutilized space on that property. And actually, I kind of, it brought up a question because it made me, you know, think about how this is being used as agricultural land. And you might have some insights to this, David, or maybe you folks do as well. But, I mean, besides the the garden and, you know, the farming that's taking place there, how is the other open space actually being used for agriculture? It's not. Okay. There's a couple horses. Okay.
A horse, there's a horse barn on the, when you take the avenue to go into, or the street, when you go into Potawat Village, you'll see there's horses there. And the other thing I think is important to know is that right now, Mad River Hospital is in the, they have 16 units in Valley West they have to rent for personnel working at the hospital. And I think it would be better if they could put those units within their own complex, and then we could have an opportunity to open up those 16 units that are in Valley West for citizens of Arcata to live there, and our medical staff could be moving over into into the property. The other thing is, in 2011, I was on the city council, and so I would have approved that. And I just feel like we have to think about how we, as Stacy said, there's so many changes going on, and we have to think about things that didn't work. The school didn't work, they were very excited about that. And that we need to move forward and allow changes for today to happen, and not continue to be stuck with what, you know, I approved in 2011. So that's one reason I made this motion. I would like to have the applicant have a chance to go in and see if they can make changes that are really necessary for us to have the medical health care that we need in our community.
Anything else to add? I know we did have a motion in a second before. Yep, press your button, let's go. Anything else to add? Yes, let's do it.
Hoping to be next, but here I am. So going last, a lot of the comments that I would have said have been reiterated. I didn't mention the garden because my understanding was that it would not be affected. Is that true? But I I do hear what another commenter had talked, that it's essential that we maybe consider a buffer between then to make sure we do preserve that. I love the garden over there as well. So I think that it, again, is really vague for us to say one way or another. And I'm really excited to see what you do have planned, and I'm looking forward to you bringing that back to us.
All right. So we did have, I guess, we we can go the motion route. I think we've received some direction, obviously. But we'll go the motion route to make it official. So we had a motion from Councilmember Stillman earlier, which hopefully, we got that one written down. But Bridget's a pro, we know that. And it was seconded by Councilmember Atkins Salazar. So all in favor of kind of moving forward with that motion, let's have an eye.
Eye.
Eye. Okay. Carries unanimously. All right, that takes us into more old business. But yes, I was going to say, let's take a quick five-minute break so we can stretch our legs and go to the bathroom. All right, folks, we are going to come back for new business, item A. All right. New business, item A is to provide direction to the Planning Commission regarding the timeline for the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program. And I actually decided, before we go to Community Development Director Loya, I was going to kind of open with something I put together just to kind of clarify some of the thoughts that I've been having and things that I've been hearing from folks. So this item is before us tonight because during a previous city council meeting, the three of us that are sitting for review of the Gateway, myself and Councilmember White, and then Vice Mayor Matthews, who's not here this evening, for the Gateway element of the general plan, confirmed a desired timeline to see drafts and recommended to us by the Planning Commission by July. And so our discussion that night included Gateway, Form-Based Code, but also other general plan amendments. And so our colleagues, both Councilmember Stillman and Atkins Salazar, should have rightfully been part of that discussion about that timeline because it was about non-Gateway elements of the general plan. And so this item tonight is to review that timeline and provide direction to the Planning Commission, including everybody that's part of that general plan update process. So I've talked to the Planning Commission chair, and I feel confident that the commission is prepared to parse out this work and complete the review by July. We don't expect this to be a final document or a final discussion with the Planning Commission, but it will allow the council to start a more formal review of the drafts with the community and with the commission. And so as we set our summer schedule kind of going forward, I anticipate that there is going to be more study sessions with the Planning Commission to review the material and to go over the recommendations that they're going to be giving the council. A few community members have reached out to express support for this timeline. And also, there have been a few that have reached out to express concerns that it's moving too fast. So from my perspective, I have been engaged in this work for over two years, the entire time that I've been on the council. And I believe that if we, as a council, can really start to provide some clarity around especially really high-interest topics for the community, that we can start to focus in on a plan that, you know, and get some answers and have some stuff to actually tangibly discuss and work with, and a plan that's going to be able to serve us for 20 years and beyond. And so we don't have a quorum this evening for any Gateway discussion because Vice Mayor Matthews is not here. So we will keep our discussion limited to overall general plan updates. So with that opening, can we have a staff report from Community Development Director David Loya?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I'll keep it very brief. I did want to just take the opportunity to let you know that the Planning Commission has taken this challenge seriously. They've developed a framework for expediting their conversations. And on page 136, on Table 1, there's the timeline that they have agreed to work with to get through these elements and provide a recommendation in July. You'll note the last two meetings on the schedule in June are the bike rack issues. Whatever the commission doesn't get through in the meeting that the element that they're considering is scheduled for goes into a bike rack. And they're hoping to get to these additional items at those two meetings. And and if they get ahead of schedule at the earlier meetings, they'll get to those bike rack issues as well. But they, you know, also recognize that there may be some policies or or discussion items that are still on the bike rack by the time they make their recommendation to you. So everyone is fully aware that you will not receive, likely will not receive, a recommendation on, with them having read and reviewed every policy. There'll still be There'll still be some outstanding issues, and we've got time built in after that to deal with those. The only other thing I wanted to quickly update you on is the status of the grants that we received to pay for a lot of this work. You may recall that the vast majority, with the exception of the budget allocation that was authorized this January, has been bootstrapped. We've secured the funding from, you know, other outside-city sources. They are not general funded. And all of these grant sources have timelines and deadlines. They want the work completed by. The couple listed here, the Sustainable Agricultural Lands Conservation Program, SB2, and the LEAP deadlines, they're all coming up in early to mid-2024. And they want to see their final work product ideally by that time. We've been working with our reps to, for these different grant sources to, you know, see if we could submit the drafts that we have at the time, recognizing that, you know, the EIR schedule is a little outside of our control. And it seems at this point that the funding sources are looking on that request favorably. So I'll report back when I know more about that. But it's looking good at this time, which is good because it's better than saying we have to have it done by then or we have to pay the money back. I'd rather not carry that message. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. But yeah, really are just looking to confirm with the additional input of Councilmember Akon Salazar and Councilmember Stillman that indeed you do want the Commission to make a recommendation by July.
Great. Thank you, Director Loya. Okay, I want to first open it up to the council for any questions, any clarifying questions, and then we will save our discussion for after we hear public comment. I see there's some people in the audience I've never seen at a council meeting before, which is nice. I'm sure they're waiting to give some comments. So any questions to clarify before we open it up for public comment?
Yeah, I'm happy to hear about the Salk grant that we're getting that extension. And I guess my question would be on the LEAP. What the adopted work product that needs to be completed? If you could clarify if that's the Gateway area plan or the general plan, or is it both?
I would have to look at the table that we have that tracks the specific tasks we use. Most of these, we spread the funding across different activities. We had, you know, the Gateway, the general plan, and then the EIR. And so I'll have to double-check on that for you. I believe the Salk grant was 100% Gateway area plan is what that was paying for.
And they're favorable, and we've got an extension for that one already.
We do not have confirmation of extension from any of these grant sources, but the, we, you know, the reps that we work with, you know, are carrying the message favorably towards their, you know, their sources to get that answered for us. And they feel confident that, you know, the work that we've done addresses the, you know, the goals. They recognize that, you know, this may be our last time to use the COVID card, but they recognize that, you know, the COVID really disrupted, you know, jurisdictions' ability to pull through on these grants. And they also recognize that, you know, the public process, you know, is sometimes a little outside of our timing control.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no more questions, we will open this item up for public comment. So if you'd like to speak on this item about the timeline for the general plan updates, please make your way to the podium and line up so we can hear your comments. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Karen Davidson. I live at 1887 Q Street in Arcata in the county. We're just a few feet away from the city. And we've been very much affected by plans made by the city. And so I urge you to not accelerate the plan because every experience we have had of things being planned quietly and quickly by the staff has been unfavorable. During the height of COVID, our farmland, the four farm parcels in the Green Belt were annexed by the city without asking any of the people who lived on those pieces of land if they wanted to be part of the city or if it fitted in with their life, their agriculture, their Green Belt plans. The bike rack system will mean that after, that the staff adjusts, sets the agenda, and anything that doesn't seem important enough to the staff will get put onto the bike rack to be considered at the end when a lot of people are on summer vacations and will probably not be considered and may, in fact, be overlooked. I believe that, you know, just seeing how plans change, that it won't be very long before the piece of land across the street from us to the east will not be Q Street industrial, and those people won't have jobs. Seems like a perfect infill site for a high-rise. The Blueberry Farm that Troy is planning and rehabbing his house and the part where we have some alpacas, llamas, that won't be Green Belt anymore because it's logical, it's next to Alliance. So that's our provision is that if things are speeded through, our experience by not being notified, by being annexed and having to pay $1,000 to get unannexed, I'm on Social Security. We just feel like it would be way too hard for the people who live adjacent to those pieces of property and the rest of the city to do it if it's an accelerated plan that doesn't give a time for all the items that might get put on the bike rack. So I thank you very much. I might have voted for you if I could have.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker.
Hello, Chris Richards again. Interesting turn, turn of twist tonight with the format, leaving out the Gateway. I always find it interesting how we weave ourselves around this whole recusal conversation on which topic can, you know, needs to be recused by which folks and all of the stuff that we've seen happen so far. And then here we are again at a meeting, and we're discussing general plan. And we've got the general plan being considered as an element inside, the Gateway Plan being considered as an element inside the general plan. And now we're seeing elements and language and documents and pictures showing up in other elements from the Gateway Plan that are also under the umbrella of the General Plan 2045. And then again, here we are, we're going to lump it all together. The EIR is calling it one project, the Gateway Plan, the general plan. And they're going to move forward with all that. And, you know, I asked, it's been a while back with Karen, the general manager, what is the Fair Political Practices, you know, opinion on this sort of thing where we're using one EIR, we're going to have folks voting on things. And I mean, trust me, I want everybody to be as involved as they can. I think it's all great. The concern is we're creating a legal problem down the road when we pass the General Plan 2045 with the Gateway embedded in it, with all the other documents that are reflective of what the Gateway is going to stand for. And also, we're going to be moving forward with these implement measures for the other zoning using, you know, all of that established stuff in the future. I mean, we're watching it all unfold. I'm seeing things, not even looking at my notes, but I just, I still question what we're doing with all that. I still am a very big proponent that rushing the Gateway Plan has always been a bad move. We should separate it, make it a specific plan, finish the general plan, you know, move forward in that direction. I think we've tripped ourselves up pretty well with time trying to do it the way we're doing it. We're going to continue to have that happen. We've got the coastal plan that's still up in the air. We've got, you know, our local coastal element. Where is that going to land with? The next two months, we're going to see a new report from the Coastal Commission on all of the stuff that they're going to put down. So I, you know, and furthermore, I would split the Gateway Plan into a north and south. I mean, I think there's been an error with that as well. Anyway, I would talk more, but my time is up. Thank you guys so much for all your work.
Thank you, Chris.
Hello again, Dave Mizerv. I live on Grant Avenue, and I'll start with my local neighborhood concerns about the general plan and the land use element. And that's that we recently got a postcard which told us that the, we were going to be included with the Craftsman's Mall area in terms of planning. And that Craftsman's Mall, as you know, there's going to be the big 900-bed dorm there that the university is doing. And it's all, it's all zoned currently industrial. And then north of there, it's kind of residential, medium use, and agricultural. And somehow, the planning department decided that they would put I Street into the Craftsman's Mall area and that they would upgrade us from low-density residential, upgrade, upgrade us from low-density residential to high-density residential. And it was pretty apparent to me, because I've been watching this for some time, that this had to do with the project that's been out there since 2015 that Strombeck has proposed, where he wants to put in a 78-unit apartment complex right next to the tennis courts. This would severely impact the neighborhood there where there's, the whole neighborhood, which is a cul-de-sac, there are only about 70 dwellings, and so it would more than double it. And if you've ever come up J Street during the day, you know that we're all friendly and we stop and let someone go by, but there's not room for two cars to pass. So this is a serious concern, and I also have the feeling that a lot of what's happening with the general plan is catering to developers like Strombeck and encouraging large apartment complexes rather than expansion, reasonable neighborhood expansion. And I really, and I noticed that this is happening and being proposed also for other neighborhoods all over Arcata and upgrading to high-density residential, which allows 50 units per acre. And I wanted to point out that with SB 9, which passed in the state recently, you can get 30 units on an acre without changing the basic character of the neighborhood. So I think this really needs to be considered. The idea that we have to somehow make most of Arcata high-density residential does not resonate with me. And I, I also think that, you know, we have to admit that the stuff that the Planning Commission can't look at immediately doesn't really go onto the bicycle rack. It goes to the parking garage. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker, please.
Hello, yeah, my name is Malcolm Riddings. You might recognize me from the last public, my last public comment on the renters inspection program. So I am head of outreach for Humble Equitable Student Housing Alliance, formerly known as street name Cal Poly Homeless. And I also stand for the New Students for a Democratic Society. I came to express our support of the timeline for the rezoning concerning the Strategic Redevelopment Program. I know that the council and the community has been going through engagement and discussions for this project. I myself just recently learned through this project, not on any comment on the council, more just my own ignorance, I guess. But of course, the value of the community engagement is always important in the decisions like this. However, I think that we need to not let that overshadow the urgentness of the action. As this gentleman mentioned over here, we have those grants that are expiring. And, you know, I would like to see those grants being used to improve the community. And of course, I think this zoning change definitely has its issues. And, but it is also providing those large benefits to the community. So we are also concerned with, you know, the gentrification of new students coming in and accessing these apartments. You know, just because they can afford it, does that mean the average Arcata resident can afford it or even average current student can afford it? So we hope that there is more development in these low-income housings. And and we're just hoping that when this document moves forward, it's also a living document that can be changed, altered, and have other community engagement as it's being developed. And we'll continue to follow these developments on the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program as Arcata grows. And thank you for your time, council, and thank you for your time, community, and have a great night.
Thank you, Malcolm.
Yes, thank you. I'm Fred Wise. I'll remind us that this started as a request by the council for a draft of the Form-Based Code. And that is what is still reflected in the minutes of March 1st. It morphed into an accelerated request for drafts of the Gateway and general plan. I'm in favor of things moving faster, but there's been lots of problems. We had the last Planning Commission meeting, we had a Planning Commissioners voting on things that they didn't realize they were voting on, found out later that they voted on the opposite thing than they thought because the pages were not labeled properly. We had a message go out to 300 people that messages go out to on Friday. The link is to the wrong page. There's all kinds of sloppiness we're seeing. We had Planning Commissioners engaged in the process of the framework. They send messages to David about their thoughts. He compiles, sends them back to them. This is outside of the meetings. This has been noted by the chair and by another commissioner that it is nice to see everyone's thoughts before the meeting. This is a clear violation of the Brown Act, and I'm sure you know that. It's a serial meeting. These things have to be done within the meeting. I've written, I think they can be done in expeditious manner, but not the way it's done now. We've seen even Director Loya not know what the schedule was and be confused about things because there's a variety of schedules out there. They're not labeled. There's a real question about what is a draft? What does completed mean? A draft should have every topic on it. It shouldn't have anything left out. The, we have the most experienced member of the Commission, Judith Mayer, and the, what I would call the least experienced, Peter Lehman, the least experienced with planning, saying the same thing. Peter says, this is nuts. I said, this is excruciating. They are practically pleading to get off this accelerated schedule. We had 25 land use suggestions and comments from the public, including comments on zoning that came to the Planning Commission. How many of them were discussed? Zero. They're not going to be discussed. It's all in the bike rack. I'll also mention that Commissioner Mayer is going to be absent during those bike rack discussions. That's part of the schedule. If the Commission decided they try this for one more meeting before deciding whether it's going to work for them. Right now, there's two against, two who think that it's possible to get this done, and two, I think, are kind of wait and see. So after April 11th, this may come back to you as they're going to, they may say this can't be done on this schedule. Getting the Form-Based Code done in accelerated manner, I'm all in favor of that. I'll also mention that the Form-Based Code was supposed to have been developed a year ago. And David, the Commissioner Loya, tapped the brakes on that. So we're all in a big mess now. The question is what to do from this point forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Hi, I don't know all the ins and outs. My name is Merle Kraus, and I live on J Street near the high school. And I have moved in my life like four times. I've seen, I've moved, lived in nice towns that have totally filled in and got crowded, and they didn't get any cheaper, and they just got, just the whole nature has changed. And that's happened to me in White Rock and British Columbia, in South Sydney, Australia, many places. And I just finally ended up here, and it's a lovely town. And I just think it really needs And I just think it really needs to be thought seriously to fill in nice neighborhoods and call it high-density and put high, put tall buildings with lots of people. I know we need housing and there has got to be some answers, but to just go full-scale and fill in high-density, 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 all these nice towns is going to change the whole community. It's going to change the nature of Arcata. It's not going to be the same place. And I'm just expressing my fears that I think that you should go really slowly and carefully instead of jumping in because some money, I'm wondering where the money is coming from. Maybe the builder, I don't know. But I just feel like it's really important to consider the people, the people and the nature of our community because we have a really good community. So thank you. That's all I can.
Thank you.
Hi again. Slow and steady wins the race and I think being deliberate in planning actions is always a good idea, you know? Check your Ts, dot your Is, that's what my boss always tells me. As far as the timeline goes though, I heard a comment when you looked at the crowd, wow, new people are here that I've never seen before. And that's exciting. This is clearly something that the community cares about. To that end, you know, especially now that we have a coalition of young people who rent, interested, I'm sure you've noticed that between the months of May and August, the population of Arcata literally cuts in half. People leave and then they come back. So at least maybe consider extending this, this decision out for a few more months. Hit October, you know, kind of at the, at the earliest. Just because there's a group of people who care, who aren't here when decisions are being made, you know, it would be better, I think, for everybody to be involved. And I think that's it. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary and I had mentioned this at a previous meeting that if somebody does a dissertation in a planning PhD on what the city of Arcata did in its general plan discussion and the Gateway Plan for this period of time in our history, it would be a very, very involved and astounding, I think, dissertation. I think how we've approached all this and COVID can be used in its excuse, but it could have been used as a great tool. I just really think we need to look back at the past, what the general plan and the involvement of the citizenry in the general plan and the many committees and time it took for many people to be involved and put their input in back in the past. And now we're asking people to just kind of rubber stamp or, you know, streamline what is being proposed by staff and the consultants and this and that. And when I spoke earlier tonight about the future and the children and the young people, you know, remember the past, be in the present, but live for the future and really think about what the next generations coming up are going to thank us or shame us about in what we make decisions for now. And yes, slow and steady wins the race and summertime is not a time for a lot of these decisions to be made. And even the consultants with the university, when I met with them after a public meeting about what the university is planning, admitted to me that they were surprised how fast the university was trying to move, how fast everything was moving. And fast is not always best.
Thank you. Okay, so do we have any more in-person public comment? We're going to go to Zoom. We're not going to go back and forth, so last chance for in-person. All right, we'll move now to our Zoom public comments. Colin User, go ahead, Colin User.
Hello, Kent Swatzky. I'm kind of old, getting long on the tooth. Something I've learned is some old sayings like haste makes waste. And I think you've heard from the public here. You heard from, I think, your second speaker there. In my opinion, you clearly have failed to firewall yourself from conflict of interest. I think anybody could challenge any decision you make just because of the action you're taking here. Those projects should have been billfocated, a firewall put up. I don't know if you have access to council. I highly recommend that you do. There's a public perception that there's a conflict the way this is going forward. And of course, that leaves you open to litigation and if you go rapidly and go through with this, you could end up in court, I don't know, five years or something. That doesn't do you any good. I find, as I get older again, the human race is extremely arrogant. We feel that we want to take a pasture just because there's only two horses in that pasture or something. That's Mother Nature's dirt. And we keep being able to put concrete on things, move fast through processes. I strongly suggest you slow-play this and there is no hurry. I get really tired of staffing people, you're going to lose this money, you're going to lose this. I've seen that some projects go through and I've heard it three times, three years apart. And the money always seems to be there. It can be recouped. I wouldn't feel like you have to be pushed by anybody on this. And I just highly recommend that you, some of us old people have that attitude where, where we can move slowly and still get things done, get them done right without conflict of interest, without ending up in court and being sued for not following correct processes. And I highly recommend that you listen to the speakers who've spoken before my, on this particular topic. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next speaker is Colin. Go ahead, Colin.
Good evening again, council members. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I think it's not accurate to characterize this process as rushed. It's been going on for really several years now. And I think the council members in their previous decision on this topic acknowledged that at a certain point with really extended public processes like this, the, you get diminishing returns in terms of public input, potentially even negative returns at a certain point. Additionally, a lot of what the general plan update is trying to accomplish, you know, certainly including but not limited to the Gateway Plan, is to respond to the city's housing crisis, the transportation crisis, the climate crisis. And, and I'm calling these things crises because they are, because there's an urgency to addressing them that is time-sensitive. And I don't think that dragging the process out any further will, will accomplish any improvement of the outcome. I think that the council members who previously decided to adopt a July deadline for this particular sort of waypoint in the process were wise to do so. That will allow the rest of the process to stay on track for adoption hopefully next year. And again, we're talking about a whole other year. And I would encourage you to stick with that. Nothing substantive has changed. This is just a procedural issue before you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lisa. Go ahead, Lisa.
Thank you. The General Plan 2020 was developed through a very robust process and it took three or four years. It took several consultants and numerous community task forces who worked on developing policy direction and language for the plan on chapters that aligned with their interests. In addition to this, there were vast opportunities for public engagement, both in the chambers and throughout the community. I understand and have accepted the process of taking this very excellent 2020 plan and using it as a strong framework for the new update. However, this update is straying far from the previous document with the inclusion of residential high zoning being proposed for many cherished neighborhoods in Arcata, along Alliance and Spear Avenue, I Street and Todd Court and neighborhoods found in the Gateway area. Recently included as an implementation measure is for the Planning Commission to consider residential high zoning for the Bayview, Sunset and Arcata Heights neighborhoods. The most egregious of all, the rezoning of a prime agricultural parcel north of 17th off of Alliance, from its protective AR resource zoning to residential high. This is against all of the policies in General Plan 2020, the city's Open Space Plan, the city's Green Belt Plan, as well as the newly drafted General Plan in process that mandates the protection of these vital resources, both in and outside of our city. Many things have changed in the last 20 years, but one thing that hasn't is that our food comes from the soil. The community is just beginning to catch up to these changes and taking notice of what is being planned, in part because much of the outreach done on the general plan was done during the COVID years, preventing many from participating. And now we have an accelerated process in motion that appears right out of the gate to be diminishing the ability of your planning commission to effectively move through the language in the plan and the community's ability to weigh in. Please allow this general plan update all of the time that is needed for all of the language to be gone through with a fine-tooth comb by the commission and committees and the community. And please do not push this accelerated process on the planning commission and the community. Thank you for your attention.
All right, our next speaker is Colin User. Go ahead.
You folks, I already spoke. You just asked me to unmute. This is Kent Swatzky, so I assume you.
Sorry, Kent. Sorry, Kent. Jane, go ahead.
Hi there, again. I want to basically second what Lisa Brown just said. I think she termed it beautifully and add a couple of things. As I mentioned earlier, I don't think we are planning to have time to consider the implications of the sea level rise study session. I don't see it on the agenda, anybody's agenda, and certainly not in this plan. And I don't think it belongs on the bike rack. The engagement with the Gateway, most of the engagement we've patted ourselves back, on the back with has been about the Gateway, but not on changes in the land use plan, such as what is now being proposed for these various high-rise, upzoning in these high-rises in these new areas that are not currently zoned for that. So I think there needs to be a healthy discussion of that and that also should be provided for. And I've noticed that if something, if a recommendation or public comment, if a recommendation from a committee even doesn't comport with the draft plan, it certainly does go to the bike rack, is never seriously considered and it doesn't happen. And that needs to be seriously addressed so these great ideas don't get lost. We need notification and discussion of the major changes, such as this upzoning. And I want to point out that it is not Arcata's need to change the entire nature of the city in order to accommodate growth. There are, there was a, there are limits to growth, particularly if you have to take into account the changes that we're going to have to address with sea level rise. It is not our responsibility to accommodate the additional growth from Cal Poly. That's their responsibility. So pushing forward, yes, we're going to have New Orleans, but they could also live in Eureka, they could live in McKinleyville where sea level rise is not an issue. So I, I think this push, push, push to put in five to seven-story buildings all over the place, not just in the Gateway area, but elsewhere, needs to be thoroughly examined as to, does this, does this really fit in Arcata? Is this what people come here for and want to live here for? And I don't think you're really looking at that. And that's where Judith Mayer's issue of looking at the values, what, what do people want? You really aren't, you really aren't addressing that and I don't think you have been, despite some of the surveys. You totally ignored what was said in January when you had the.
Okay, Jane, thank you. That is your three minutes. Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other online public comment about the timeline for the Gateway, for the general plan update? All right, Colin User 3, you were the one I was hoping was still wanting to talk. All right, Colin User 3, go ahead. There you go.
Hello?
Yep.
Hi, I would like to echo what Colin Fisk said. I don't think it's fair to categorize this plan as accelerated. It's been, you know, out for a long time. It's been planned for a long time. And I just like, you know, when we talk about crises, like especially the housing crisis, like we're not being facetious. It is a crisis. The transportation crisis is a crisis. And the school isn't going anywhere. So when you leave money on the table and let things expire because you're kind of like dragging your feet about it, it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. And there really aren't many other alternatives. I think like this idea that like another sprawling neighborhood is going to be built that, you know, a bunch of people who are fresh out of college can afford, you know, a three-bedroom house. I just don't think that's going to happen. And I think it ties into the needs of the area, along with the Mad River community expansion. You know, the, these projects are necessary and they have been, you know, talked about at nauseam for several years now. And like what Colin Fisk said, at a certain point, you get diminishing returns with public comment and you need to start like looking for solutions. And the approval of this plan is procedural and allows the council and the planning commission to essentially do their jobs. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. No more public comment. Okay, so I'll open it back up to the council for any further questions or discussions. And this time we'll start at this end of the dais. Alex, if you'd like to start.
Well, one of the things I've been interested in, and now that I definitely understand them, but back in the early 2000s, the historic preservation community talked about Form-Based Codes and how they could be used within historic neighborhoods and, and in downtowns, historic downtowns, et cetera. At the time, I don't think, they were so new that the cities didn't really glom onto them or pick them up. But I think it's time for us to really move that forward because I can think it can be a very interesting possibility. And they can be used throughout this city. We can, especially out in Valley West and wherever. You know, I say Valley West because we have the Mad River development and that could possibly be recreatively developed out there for additional housing. And I can, so one of my goals is, and I've always wanted to see the Form-Based Codes move forward. I think that's really important. I think it was interesting, our sea level rise discussion with the Planning Commission. And I think we're at the point where either we're risk averse or we're willing to take a risk, one or the other. And we look at infrastructure or buildings and they have a life on them and you, hopefully you take care of your building after, in less than 50 years. You don't wait till it's over 50 years old and pretty dilapidated to decide you're going to go in and keep it alive. Or, and that has been something that in Arcata has happened for a long time. And that's how I got into historic preservation because there were so many buildings that were empty, that had been over 50 years and had been neglected. And it was a crying shame for me to see that. So that's why I got into it. I think our infrastructure is going to be okay. I know there's a lot of considerations about that and we're developing and working on that. And I think in the sea level rise, we found out more about it. And homeowner opportunities is really a massive one. So Larry Acker, when he was our community development director, back a number of years, he always talked about how important it would be to have apartments or condominiums in our community so that our older citizens could move out of their three, four-bedroom houses and move into something else. And then those would, could go on the market for other families. And, and when I walked the door to door in the 1970s, there was this gal, she said, are you going to be able to have some kind of housing for me to move into when I get older and my husband passes? And, well, and I saw her again in, in 2006 and she said, you've never found me that. You haven't been able to build that in Arcata. It's not available. Here I am. She's out weeding in her yard. She's had cancer. Her husband has passed and she's living in a large house. That house sold after she passed. But I think we should have these opportunities. But I think we should have these opportunities, not only for older citizens like myself, but younger citizens that we have throughout the community who are willing to find a condominium, can be a studio condominium to start their life. And so I, I really look forward to ownership opportunities. And it's going to require gentrification, and that's exactly what I did in historic preservation when I started redoing houses in Arcata. I gentrified neighborhoods, and other people picked it up, and they started to do it too. And I'd love to see that happen again, gentrification of our historic structures. So I guess I didn't answer the question. I do think we need to continue to move forward.
So there's a lot. As a former planning commissioner, I, I do have some reservations. You know, I've been watching the current planning commission meetings, including the recent 3/27. I've had a lot of input from community members. Our former planning commission chair, Julie Bussard Elcock, articles in the Time Standard, and then today in the Lost Coast outpost, there was a quote, and it said, "Some members of the planning commission expressed concerns over the tight timeline, saying it's unrealistic to expect them to complete the work by July." There were several quotations also in the Time Standard, pretty much reiterating the same from Judith, from Christian, and from Peter. So I'm getting the sense that the commissioners are feeling pressured and feel like they won't be able to responsibly review all the documents. We're talking about the gateway area plan, form-based codes, the remaining elements in the general plan. For example, the land use element, which a prior speaker had talked, actually several people have been talking about that concern. And the circulation element, and, and then have a draft ready by July with recommendations. I don't know if Julie's letter will become available, but when it does, I would suggest reading it. The current July deadline, as pointed out by others, is in the summer. We have two commissioners that will be gone during June. Judith will be gone the entire month. Peter will be gone two weeks. And let me remind you that two of our commissioners are new. We also have a vacancy yet to be filled. These planning commissioners are volunteers, with most having jobs and family obligations. I don't want to push so hard that we end up with yet more vacancies and lose valuable commissioners. Grants, I'm really excited or happy to hear that the staff is seeking extension. As another commenter pointed out, we can't base our decisions on fear. $250,000, we can put that and budget that, if need be, in our budget, which is coming up. That's the worst possible scenario. But if that's what it needs to happen to make sure, something that's going to affect Arcata forever, our future, then let's do that. Let's do it right. Let's just talk about the RENA numbers, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. Our numbers are good. We have made substantial progress. We are halfway there. We still have four more years, and that does not include the numbers of 100 from the Westwood Garden Apartments. Cal Poly is working towards on- and off-campus student housing projects. We have four motels in Valley West where I live that will be converted into temporary student housing. Safe parking is going to be renewed for another year. We have these housing opportunities in place now, which will allow us to get these plans right. As Jane pointed out, most of the work that we have done to this point have been on the gap, the gateway area plan, but not a whole lot of energy towards the new land use element. I understand that people have been getting notices. It was agendized for them to come and speak, but we ran out of time and they were sent home. We need to make sure we hear from people. I understand that people are saying we had plenty of engagement, but I'd like to know what new efforts we have done since January 23rd that has been different than what we have. Because if we want more engagement and we want new people to engage, then we need to do something differently. Status quo obviously is not working. My concern, as I said, is that there has been relatively little public engagement in developing the current draft of the land use plan. Commissioner Christian Figueroa said, "The land use is huge." And he said this, and the Time Standard quoted Christian. Most of public discussion on the planning commission level has, like I said, on the gateway area plan, with many remaining issues that have yet been fully discussed or decided, they've been put into the bike rack. We're giving two meetings to take all of this bike rack. Honestly, when I was a planning commissioner, you wait that long, I'm probably going to forget a lot of it. And I think that, you know, the, that's just asking a lot. City council, where, where, what I'm hearing from the, from the community is nonetheless pressuring the planning commission to complete its deliberations and address outstanding issues at too rapid of a pace. For example, despite the joint council commission and the study session as brought out by Jane and others, sea level rise, which was just last week, there has been no scheduling for a time for the planning commission to discuss the implications of sea level rise for our building residential infrastructure in the coastal zone and how it affects the, the, the general plan overall. The rush to complete this land use element draft without giving sufficient time for discussion of the major issues at the planning commission level is quite concerning for me and as well as others, as well as the commissioners themselves. I don't want to shame them into having extra meetings. Yes, we need extra meetings, but we need to spread that over time. One or two months is not going to be a big deal. If we do this right, it will affect our future, as I said, forever. So if we need to extend, expend, extend this from July 11th to August 11th, or even September, when people are here, when summer is over, so be it. We can keep moving, and you know what? It would be a good problem to have if we finished at the, the deadline that we were hoping. But to, to, I, I know there are a couple of planning commissioners who have said they are willing to have weekly meetings. I don't think that's fair. I'm a council, and I have a stipend, and I think that would be a lot to ask. But these are volunteers. That's not what they signed up for. So the rush to complete this land use element, the circulation element, some of the other elements that need to pull all of the general plan together, I think we need more time. Lots of things, good ideas are going to be lost. Good ideas that have been raised by the planning commission, by city committees and the public. My concern is going to be that they will be lost. The circulation element will not be finished in time and delivered to the planning commission in time for this deadline. That's one of my fears also. So what doesn't get finished, or takes too much time, or if it's complicated, we put it in the bike rack. My concern is that everything's getting pushed to the back burner until June, when everybody's gone. The general plan had deadlines. We knew this from the beginning. Given the magnitude of the gateway area plan, I think that we should have completed, as I think Mr. Chris Richards had mentioned, that we needed, we, we might have done well to separate that at that time, went to a specific plan and got this done. But this is where we are now. So I, I feel like the, the gap plan was subsidiary to the general plan. And I understand how people want to start chewing on some of these form-based codes. But the state, at a very, very rapid pace, because we are in a housing crisis, it's constantly changing. And my concern is, we put all of this time into our form-based codes, but then the state's going to trumpet anyway. So community benefits, these kinds of things, we are going to hash out, spend the time on. And then what happens? It could be a moot point anyway. That's not to say that we shouldn't move forward on it. I'm just, consider that. The desire is that we don't have meetings to last all night for the planning commission, or at least that's my desire, and I believe that that's their desire as well. I think it would be more realistic if we would allow the planning commission to finish their initial review of the individual elements, say the land use element and the circulation element. I know that these notices have come out. Let these people have an opportunity to speak. They've been invited, but they still haven't had an opportunity to speak. And I think I've well went over my time, so I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. I want to, first of all, bring up a point that really bothers me when it's brought up and somebody in public comment brought up. Students are part of our community. They live here. Why aren't they part of our community? Why should we have to say, you have to go live in Eureka, you have to go in McKinleyville? Why would we not build housing for people that live here, whether they're students or not? I was born here and I was a student. What do you do with those people? Right? I mean, I think that not only we should build housing for students, I think we have a duty as a governing body to provide housing for our community. And I think that people that want to say that we don't have a duty to build housing for students, it's just, that incredibly bothers me. And I just want to be clear that like, I personally believe students are part of our community. You are part of our community. You make our community more valuable. You grow into people that want to stay into this, in this community and work in this community and be part of it. That being said too, I know that we heard a lot of comment tonight in favor of slowing this process down. And I, I want to indicate also that we receive a lot of public comment, that that is not necessarily the only view that we are getting. And I just want to personally share that I talked to just as many people that commented tonight that said they couldn't be here because they work service industry jobs. They're at work right now. I have a friend that is at a land trust meeting because she is involved in the community. I have friends that are in class right now, people that can't come to meetings like this and do not have the bandwidth or accessibility to be able to continue this endless feedback loop and participating in the engagement process, you know, for, for years and years on end. And so, and I want to add into, because Kimberly, you asked the question, who else new is being engaged? We have this student housing coalition alliance that we engaged during rental inspection, and that showed up here tonight to be able to comment on this issue as well, and that are involved in housing issues in our community and want to see, you know, more housing that will benefit them. We, they had, you know, the news be brought down to them that Cal Poly Humboldt wasn't going to house them. And so what? We're just going to say neither are we. You can move to Eureka, you can move to McKinleyville. No, we need to work with these groups of students. We need to work with our community members to build housing for everyone. And so, and then also in addition, the work that now Equity Arcata has been engaged in the gateway planning process and general planning process as well to provide feedback on various elements of the plan, and waiting to kind of hear some of that feedback as well. And just in, in the point of time that, you know, and maybe it's me like getting greedy and I want to give my feedback now, but like this is something, I think the, one of the first meetings for me as a city council member was, let's get the new council members up to speed on what we're doing for the general plan and the strategic infill updates. Like, and that was two years ago, over two years ago at this point. And so, you know, maybe I'm getting a little greedy and I want to be able to give my feedback and be part of it. But, you know, we, we put a lot on the planning commission and said, you know, we want to hear some recommendations, but what's, what's the consequence? There's not really a consequence. We're not going to say, you're all fired because you didn't get us this deadline in time. We're going to say, thank you for what you have gotten us so far. Let's all discuss this together, deal with these bike rack issues. And, you know, have, we've talked about having more study sessions with the planning commission. You know, I would propose that we would have a planning, a joint study session in August, and then maybe again in October, again, when there's more students back in town as well, to discuss those bike rack issues and go over a lot of those recommendations. I think that would be super valuable, especially with the commission, with some new commissioners and currently sitting one member down, to just be able to, you know, when we get to that point, say, here's the work you've done. Thank you. It's great. Let's all work on it a little bit together now and, and see what we still need the commission to, to flush out before we go into environmental review. And so also, they're still, you know, kind of testing out this new pilot method. They're still going to have another meeting. If they come to us and say, yeah, this isn't going to work. We need an extra month. I don't think we're going to say no. You know, deadlines help. I, I am a teacher. Deadlines are important. You have to say this is when it's due, or else if there's no due date, it'll never get done. And it'll just remain in the ether, and no one will have an idea what's going on. And we'll have half the people say, this is moving too fast, and half the people said, gosh, we're still working on that? So I, I just think, you know, having a sensible deadline that provides a point in time for review and open communication between the commission and the council in a meeting where the public can attend and be part of and provide feedback of, you know, what we see. I think the public wants to see some of these larger decisions be made as well. We're all just still sitting here waiting, building height, L Street, parking, all these things that we talk about all the time, that no draft or formal decision has come on. That's why we want this due date and deadline, so we can decide those things. So, yeah, I think that's all I have to say about that. And that just, I would request that we look, as we look forward at schedules, I know going into the summer, it is a little ways off, but looking to have at least two additional study sessions, perhaps in August and October, where we can work with the commission and also address some of these bike rack issues. Because one of the main concerns that I've heard, especially, you know, from, from my own colleagues here, from planning commissioners that I've spoken to, and from the public, is that, you know, where do some of these issues go if they don't get solved or they don't get decided on? I would like us to all, you know, be able to provide feedback on those in, in a sensible way as a commission council. And I, I spoke with a planning commissioner about this too, who indicated, yeah, we might not get all of those. And there might be some decisions where we're not ready to render something or would like to hear the council's feedback. So I think just having a point in time where we can open that communication up is going to be essential.
All right, so I just want to start by saying I spend a lot of my time in housing meetings. These are regional meetings, statewide meetings. So a lot of the things that I'll be talking about are not things that I dreamed up. They are what is currently being discussed. So first of all, regarding the timeline, just to reiterate what some of my colleagues have said, we did begin talking about the general plan prior to some of us, or all of us, being elected. And so to say that we're accelerating or rushing, I just don't think that that's true. We are in 2023, still working towards goals in 2024. So I, I don't consider that to be rushing. So I did talk to Chair Davies about the proposed timeline and asked him if it was feasible. And he said, you know, for the most part, he thought that it was. You know, it's been said, they're trying it out. This is an experiment to see how it's going. If it's not going to work, and if the commissioners are all upset and saying that it's not going to work, I really don't see him continuing on with it. I don't think he's trying to be a thoughtful leader, and I think we can rely on that. We discussed also, you know, the deadlines that are coming up, like could they meet them? And, you know, these are goals. They're goals to work towards. And as was mentioned, what's going to be the big consequence if, if they're off and they haven't met them? You know, there's not, we, we as a council want the best possible work. And, you know, the, we had a citizen that was concerned about, you know, about the bike rack. And I just want to clarify, when I talked to Chair Davies about that, he told me, it, it wouldn't be staff putting things in the bike rack. Just as, you know, it's not staff that determines which elements they're talking about. Chair Davies said to me, you know, these will be things that, when they can't be discussed in a meeting, that will be moved to the bike rack. So it's, it's the commissioners moving them, not staff. I do think some type of concrete items, you know, there's, I, I think it would really actually put people at ease. I think that there are going to be compromises made, and I think it would be really good to start having those discussions so that the public can really weigh in. I mean, people are already weighing in on very specific things every meeting. And let's bring those, you know, some of those things forward to actually be discussed so that we're not just talking about vague concepts. And just regarding strategic infill, and this is where, these aren't my, necessarily my thoughts, but what I've learned and discussed in meetings, like I said, regionally and statewide. So as Ben said, we're in a housing crisis and a climate crisis. And so having that knowledge tells us that we need to keep moving. Doesn't mean we need to be reckless, but we need to be thoughtful, we need to be intentional, and we need to move as quickly as we can while being thoughtful and intentional. Changes to the way that we think about, produce, and use housing and transportation are absolutely necessary to help mitigate both our housing and climate crises. These are different ways of- These are different ways of thinking for me, as is for a lot of us. Sometimes it's not always things that maybe personally I, I think are, you know, what I would like to see, but that's me speaking from my privileged place of being a homeowner and also not considering other, other things like our housing, our housing crisis, climate change, transportation needs. So the direction that Arcata is headed in is not something that we came up ourselves. This isn't an idea that Arcata came up with. It is actually the direction that the state of California is heading. I hear this in, in state meetings. We as Arcadans are simply on the cutting edge of this. So it might seem radical because again, we are out in front, leading the way. Arcata receives accolades both regionally and statewide for the work that we're doing and for being forward-thinking, again, for that climate and housing crisis. And so I just, I can't tell you how many meetings that I've been in where Arcata is praised for being on that forefront, which, you know, is really good and comforting to hear. Just finally, just to talk about the RENA numbers because that was brought up. And the problem with the RENA numbers, which is talked about a lot, is they are based on past population numbers. There is no forward-thinking involved in those RENA numbers. So when the state was telling Arcata how many housing units we needed to build, it was based on prior years, not considering all of the climate refugees that we have had in the past couple of years, not, not considering the growth in Cal Poly, which we are partly responsible for, and also not considering many retired folks that have come up here. So, yeah, I, I think that's all. I think I've said enough.
Thank you, Stacy. And I like, and thank you for bringing up the point too. And I was thinking about this earlier. I said, "I don't know, maybe I'm reading the wrong books or going to the wrong conferences or taking, listening to the wrong podcasts." No, not the wrong ones, but I mean, the, the idea of, you know, our strategic infill plan is, yeah, the way of the future that the state is moving. It is strongly championed by, you know, those who work towards climate change goals and protecting the climate and creation of walkable cities, creation of, you know, the idea of like a 15-minute city where you can walk anywhere and get your services within 15 minutes. Arcata's close. I mean, we're, we're like almost that and if we keep sprawling out, we're never going to be, you know, that 15-minute city. And, and so, you know, it really is kind of the forward-thinking of, you know, the entire state of California and also, you know, the, the planning discussions and environmental planning, especially towards, you know, again, reducing our carbon footprint is, you know, towards infill housing, is towards walkable communities. And, you know, we're on, as Stacy said, we're on the cutting edge of that. And so I think that's a really important, you know, point to bring up and, you know, an accolade to give to our staff as well for, and past council, and past council for, you know, requesting this and pursuing this strategic infill plan. And so, you know, just thank you to staff and our forerunners for that as well. So.
So I would just like to add, I feel like a lot of people think, I used, I've used this before, if you go over to Target and you spend an hour there, you'll come back and people feel like it'll all be built, that we're moving that fast. And my feeling is it's going to take a long time. We'll get planning in place and then it takes a while for people to be able to find property, to be able to do the development that's necessary because there's a lot of work and development. There's all the foundation work, all your soils. It goes on and on. Not, that excludes just getting your project approved. And so it's going to, it's not, you know, I, I don't think, if we got it all approved, let's say we did it tonight and we approved the plan tonight and everything was done, we're not going to see development, you know, for five years. It could be five years. There are some people that are waiting for this to happen. They bought a property that had a house that burnt on it and then they figured, hmm, I could build on it now. But with the talk about having this new plan coming forward, et cetera, I know I'm not supposed to mention the G-word, but their feeling is that'll make it a nicer project. They could actually do a design that would be better than under the current code that we have. So we do, we have some people thinking to the future and how things could be better. And we know the future is going to take a while for it to be developed and that's definitely happened over the years. And, you know, we've, we've gone through many phases. Or anyway, I'm aware of many phases we've gone through for over the years. And I don't think we're going to be moving along and I really appreciate that, that we're going to have the meetings and talk about, we're going to have to argue about, maybe that's too wild or whatever, but we'll have discussions and they'll probably be lively ones about what we can do and not do and what's going to be good for the future. But the future is going to be something that my grandchildren are going to really appreciate because they'll find a place to live besides at my house.
Well, on that, I would like to make a motion to uphold the timeline that was set on the March 1st meeting.
And could I make one quick comment?
Yes, we have a motion and a, okay. And we have a second on the table from Councilmember Stillman and we'll have a quickie, a response here and then we'll go to the other.
So I think we're in agreement more than not. I, I think that yes, what Alex said, it's not going to happen overnight. And yes, I don't want sprawl. And yes, the RENA numbers are not taking in account Cal Poly expansion. And I absolutely do stand in solidarity with the students. And we talk about what is sensible. Would it be sensible to add another month? I think in light of how much time it's going to affect us in the future, that that might be a sensible decision. Consequences, if they don't meet the date for the planning commission, we might lose another valuable commissioner. I just want to point out Julie beside Elcock, who was the former chair of the planning commission until just recently, has over 14 years in chief, says, "I'm writing this letter to express my concern regarding the Gateway Area Plan, the general plans and the hard deadline that has been placed upon the planning commission for completion of those drafts. I feel strongly that this deadline is placing an undue burden on the commission and the only result will be, in my opinion, a plan that won't represent the community's vision or how we would like the city, the city to grow. As a former planning commission and a planning commission chair, a Realtor, a real estate investor, a property manager and the owner of a property management business, I struggle to see the logic in the rush to put this plan in place. I fully support the idea behind the gap, the Gateway Area Plan, and look forward to its completion. However, the reality is with the cost of materials, construction and labor costs, it will be difficult to attract developers to our area right now at this moment, as Alex pointed out. So this is the perfect opportunity for the city to continue to work on our plans for future growth. I encourage you to direct your staff to let the planning commission know that you fully support them in taking all the time they need to get it right. When the economy changes, and it will, we will have a quality plan already in place that will attract the type of development we are hoping for. Regarding the general plan and the various elements that needs, need still have work, I would suggest that these be put on hold until the Gateway Area Plan is finished. It would be wise to finish one element plan at a time and not jump around, which is currently happening. Proceeding in this disorganized fashion is confusing both to the public, the owners of the plan and the commission." And then she quotes from the Time Standard, "It's unrealistic deadline for completing the land use plan," said Judith Merer, planning commissioner. "We are in a danger zone. We have too much work," said Peter Lehman, planning commissioner. And then of course, as Christian Figueroa said, "This land use is huge." So that, that's just what I'm feeling, that, you know, a little more time might be sensible. Give them a, you know, a month. I don't want to shame them into having weekly meetings, going into, you know, the wee hours of the night and losing sleep over this. I appreciate what they do for the community. They're giving time of themselves. They're volunteers. They're not our employees.
So my feeling is- I think Director Loyola wanted to respond to part of that. Was that?
Well, I just wanted to give a little bit more context. I mean, I tried to make the staff report very brief, you know, trying to respect the time, you know, of everyone here. I'm not attempting to speak on behalf of the planning commissioners by any stretch of the imagination, but I do just want to provide you a little bit more detail about the process they went through. In particular, in light of, you know, some of the comments around what commissioners have said, the commissioners are concerned. I think everyone is concerned. We're all concerned about how do we meet these timelines? Couple of meetings ago, the commissioners evaluated a framework for getting through the material and they agreed to that framework by consensus despite their concerns. There were different opinions on the table about how to do that. Peter Lehman was interested right then and there in establishing extra meetings, additional studies, special meetings, excuse me, to get through the material. Ultimately, the commissioners decided as a group, the majority, decided to give this a try and are willing to try to meet the, the deadline that the council set. At their last meeting, it was their first working meeting where they were actually applying this framework that, you know, that they agreed to by consensus. And I had the opportunity today in the preparation for their next planning commission staff report to tally up because they wanted to see a running list of how, how they were progressing. There were 30, I believe 39 policies in the land use element. Of those 39, 34 concerns were raised or opportunities for changing the, the policy language. And even though in that first meeting, we were still trying to figure out how to implement the framework. So it was the first time that they had actually used that framework and it was a little clunky getting through the, the mating material and we had to constantly remind ourselves, "Well, what do we do next?" Despite that, they got through about half of the policies that they had listed in their, their list of policies that they wanted to address. And so I guess the reason I bring this up is because yes, there's some trepidation. Yes, they understand the commitment. Yes, they have a framework that they are interested and engaged in using to try and meet these objectives. And I wanted to make sure that you knew that before you took your, your vote on whether to reinforce that.
Well, my feeling is, as Stacy said, is that when we have the chair, we'll come forward and say, "We have to change this or change that" because he'll understand what's going on. And I think we should allow our chair of the planning commission to keep us informed about how things are going and if there are issues. And if, if they can't have extra meetings, they can't have extra meetings. They'll figure it out. We have a lot of very smart adults serving on the planning commission.
And I'll just add that Chair Davies has been, you know, incredibly communicative, you know, with myself. And so, you know, bring, bring this to the commission. I mean, if they do feel that this is not possible after working through this framework, you know, we are more than happy to revisit this and support them because I think what I've, I've said over and over again, especially when you go more specifically into gateway pieces too, you know, that I really, I value their, their input in this and I value the commission's feedback and the work that they're doing. And if they think that they can't do the work in that time, then we're ready to hear that. And so with that, we had a motion and a second. All right. I'll call the question if there's no more. All right. We have a motion and a second. Motion from Councilmember Atkins Alar, second from Councilmember Stillman for, I should read it again, continuing with the current proposed timeline for the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So motion carries, three to one. All right. And so that now takes us into item 12 of our agenda, which is oral and written communications. So this time is provided for people to address the council or submit written communications on matters that are not on the agenda. Know that pursuant to the Brown Act, council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. And supported requests that require council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council will be limited to three minutes. If you are here in person and want to give public comment, please line up at the podium. And if you are on Zoom, press, or on your phone, press star nine to raise your hand if you would like to make public comment. Okay, we're just gonna, we're going for it.
Yeah, hello. There we go. To avoid confusion on which topic we're on, Gateway or General Plan, I'm going to let, let Fred speak an extra three minutes of my time, so I'm ceding to him. Thank you.
Thank you. The first, David, thank you for mentioning Maggie Murchey. She's a very dear person as, as we all know. I feel that there's been a promise that's been developed over these last, this last year and a half of, that there are going to be lots of apartments. There's going to be lots of affordable prices. It's no fault of yours. As Councilmember Stillman said, people think that these apartments are just going to sprout up and, and result in lower rents. So that you've sort of been painted into a corner by this feeling in the community, which is not valid. The, I mentioned, and as I said, it's no fault of yours. I mentioned that there was a communication sent out by the city that had a wrong link on it. It went to a different link that went to, showed the different zoning changes and the height recommendations. And there's four major typos that are actually zoning typos, not minor typos. But there's some question about where did this 7654 actually come from? It came from an exercise that was done. The, when I say exercise, the word, Councilmember White was there, the word "exercise" was repeated 31 times over the course of this, that meeting. It was clearly just for conversational purposes, but it was been taken to be a verbatim situation, the 7654 heights. It may also be 100% unnecessary because developers are going to do what they want. This, the notion of, of deciding how high things should be may, may not matter at all. The Transportation Safety Committee, as you know, has voted strongly about the L Street Linear Park. Prior to their discussion on the circulation element of the general plan, a member said, "Hey, they didn't listen to us at all on the Linear Park. Why should we spend time giving any recommendations on the general plan?" That's kind of a defeatist attitude, but that's how they feel. At the April 11th meeting of the planning commission, there's five topics on their agenda and they've been unable to get through one. So there's, the things that are on the bike rack just keep increasing, which is going to be an issue, but not unconquerable. What Commissioner Stillman mentioned about Form-based code, I heartily support. And we all look forward to the draft of the Form-based code so we can go from there. Homeownership opportunities has been a big theme of mine and I had talked to now Chair Davies about this about six months ago. Because of situations completely outside of Arcata, lending and insurance issues, it's extremely unlikely that there'll be homeownership condos. They're being withdrawn all over the state and all over the country. Interest rates are now about 9% for condos. So the, but that was one of the things that was on the planning commission's list of topics that they wanted to talk to experts about. Former Chair Julie Vasada Elcock said this, "To talk to lenders and insurance brokers to see what would possible could happen." In terms, I mentioned this earlier, but, but we'll figure out in the weeks to come, what is the draft and what is, what are we going to get? I think things are going to work out. The conversation about too fast or too long, it's kind of both. It's taken too long to get to this point. But at this point, we still have to go forward in a reasonable fashion. As Councilmember Atkins Alaro said, "We still have to be thoughtful, intentional and not reckless." The commissioners, as Director Loyah said, the commissioners are the ones who are sending things to a bike rack. They're sending them because there's not enough time to go over them. And they're standing there because the issues are too complex to talk in the time that they have. And they're sending them there because more information is needed. So all these things are going to get worked out in the next few, few weeks. We'll, we'll see what they happen at their next meeting and we'll see what they say. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Good evening to the Arcata City Council and city staff. Firstly, I hope everyone's having a good day. My name is Gerardo Hernandez. I'm a community member and a college student at Cal Poly Humboldt. I haven't attended recent city council meetings- I haven't attended recent city council meetings, as I frequently do, but I wanted to express my gratitude for the city, for last month's for removing the homeless encampment at the Arcata Transit Center. Let's see here. I'm overall just glad that the city listened to the concerns of the residents about the health and safety conditions that were at the transit center, such as the human waste, drugs, and so on. I just grateful always for any type of city that always listens and addresses those types of concerns. I just encourage the city to continue in the status quo to offer shelter services to these houseless individuals when given the opportunity. Also as well, I encourage the city council to always focus on continuing to envision Arcata where residents can access safe and affordable housing. Finally, I do want to thank our city officials for making sure that Cal Poly Humboldt students are included and involved in these types of discussions within these issues such as our housing crisis. It's always important to recognize that these types of students are also human beings just trying to get by and also wanna be part of our wonderful community. So overall, I appreciate the comments, particularly from our mayor on expressing that earlier in the previous item. Overall, just thank you and continue for what you're doing within your job. Thank you. That is all. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joanne McGary, and many meetings ago, I talked about the THC and the CBD and transparency, truth and trust and honesty, humanness, humility, and caring, compassion, connectedness. That's my THC for all of this. And I am a little disturbed by what Dave Mizerv presented in terms of the legal document that was filed, and that apparently the final language of that was not necessarily presented to you council members prior to its being filed with the courts. And it is a very different flavor of language than what I was made to understand was the decision of the council at the time. And so I just want some transparency and truth and trust about this issue. The people, democracy, the vote, they spoke. Fifty-two percent is the majority, and you can make your decision and have personal feelings and seek out information from other sources. But what I was thinking was gonna be filed by the courts was something much more tame and conciliatory as opposed to what the language, the final language was, and that you did not necessarily see it is also concerning.
All right. Any more in-person? Yes, I see some in-person public comment.
Well, Sunset area neighborhood. I just wanna really encourage you, since we are gonna stick to the timeline, apparently, that was the decision tonight, to really try to encourage more community feedback before you upzone densities in six-plus neighborhoods in Arcata. It's really, I understand social engineering to get people out of their cars. We're trying it, but the cars are still there. Neighborhoods are super impacted. Adding more density, eventually, maybe thirty years from now, people will have abandoned individual cars, but right now, those cars are still there. The kids come, you know, they move in. The house across the street from me, there are six cars. Down the street, the infill from ADUs is resulting in each property, you know, having approximately three to six cars per property on my street, Western Avenue, in the Sunset area neighborhood. So eventually, I think we'll get there, and making a walkable city is where we need to go, but, and I understand things won't happen, you know, immediately. But I question the value of increasing the density in all the neighborhoods in Arcata. Alex, you are a proponent of historical preservation, as am I. So, you know, the nightmare scenario is, you know, property values go up high enough that, you know, an old house goes on the market, it gets torn down, an apartment house gets built. Eventually, Arcata becomes a city of renters. It is, I know, but even more so, right? Homeownership is thirty percent, right? You know, as a person who owns property and who opted to live here as a homeowner, I'm feeling, you know, crying my white privilege here, but I'm feeling not real super supported in terms of city policy. It's, it has to be a balance. Please try to keep a balance. Please, thank you so much.
All right. Any more in-person public comment before we move online? Actually, I think we've almost ticked all the boxes. Okay.
Call in user one. If this is Kent, I apologize again for cutting you off earlier for the second time.
Hey, no problem, Karen. I, you know, I, sometimes I have two phones and I make double comments. No, I've never done that. Anyway, I have the privilege tonight to speak to a topic. And I wish to compliment Councilmember Kimberly White. I met her, a quick little story here. I met her, I believe it was a Labor Day picnic, and she was there, and I, all of a sudden when I saw her, I said, well, there is somebody very unique. And I was correct. Now, Kimberly was not comfortable speaking at that thing, and she actually forgot her best topic or best reason why she should be elected, was she had been on the Planning Commission. And she went back and she fixed that one. Kimberly, you've done a wonderful job of speaking in the public forum. And I've always felt that a great advantage is had by somebody who takes the time to serve on a planning commission before they serve on a council. Should it be required? Probably, is my opinion. It should be because that's a good share of what you do there. And so she has an advantage over the rest of you. But I, again, I've worked very well. I was proud of Steve Madrone. I felt Steve, and same thing when I saw him. There's just certain people in my life that I recognize they're a notch above. So Kimberly, if you ever decide to run for supervisor in Humboldt County or any other office, I'm more than happy to support you. And I think maybe the rest of the people on the council should listen. You walked that walk, you've talked the talk. I don't think any of the others have there, possibly, but I really appreciate you and I appreciate your service. And I know sometimes people don't say that to you on the council, but I think this is a hundred percent justified. Otherwise, I wouldn't be saying it. So Kent Swatki and many other people want to say thank you for what you're doing there. Thank you, my pleasure to speak.
All right, our next speaker is Anthony. Go ahead, Anthony.
Hey, everyone. Anthony DeLuca here from Arcata. And I wanted to, quick, don't have my statement written, so I'll do my best. I had a nice email exchange with Judith Mayer over the past week and a nice phone call with Karen Deemer. And I appreciate that I can have these conversations with people who represent the city. And I wanna continue to urge and also build on some of the comments other people said here tonight, particularly about public input. I think that, I believe it was Sarah who was saying earlier that she's got people who feel differently than a lot of people here at the meetings feel, and they can't make it for this reason or the other. And I totally understand and empathize with that and think that, you know, there's a lot of disagreement about population density in Arcata. We all know that we need housing and we're not against that, but we wanna do it in a way that's gonna fit the culture and the values that we all have and share here. I think that some disagreements are worth getting to the bottom of, are worth finding the solution. And if it takes more people coming, more hours, more time, and I think that that's gonna be worth it. It's a, you know, it goes back to responsible growth, Arcata suggesting that we create a new committee and how that committee could get more people involved because there would be people who were selected for that committee who could outsource and work together. And, you know, the idea is public participation. And I want to kind of point towards the Turner Housing Innovation Labs is kind of the anti-this, that, you know, the anti-public participation. That is a technical route that doesn't include anybody's perspective from the area, and it includes a lot of perspective of people who are interested in capitalizing on the area but may not actually know about the area. And as far as all the students go and people that are here, we all know what we have and how beautiful and amazing it is. So this is our time to incentivize businesses to do better, to offer them opportunities to get themselves out there to do better, to come together as a community. And even if there is a lot of disagreement, you know, San Luis Obispo was able to keep its five-story maximum and allow no drive-throughs in their town, even with Cal Poly coming there. Cal Poly over-enrolled and San Luis Obispo sued them. So, you know, there's options. We don't have to do exactly what the state tells us. We have a right to do what Arcata is. And, you know, there was time, a decade ago, the state was talking about breaking up into five different states, and that isn't happening. Obviously, California has some economic interest in our area, so this is why we need to come together now and really figure out how to do it right. And thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you, Anthony. All right, our next speaker is Jane. Go ahead, Jane.
Hi there, Jane Woodward again. I just wanna point out that in maintaining your deadline, that you need to make clear to the Planning Commission that you don't have unreasonable expectations for them, and that if they feel they need to spend more time, you need to clarify that you're willing to give them that time so that they don't just feel like you're being, pardon me for saying so, hard-assed and saying, well, make this deadline. Make it clear that they're working on a process, they, we know it's difficult for them, and if it's not working for them to feel comfortable making decisions that they feel they need to have and getting the public comment and involvement that they desire, then explain that. Make it clear to them that that's how you feel and that you're willing to move deadlines as needed. And again, I also wanna commend Kimberly White for her fine work she's been doing and for years on the Planning Commission. And Julie, who was on the Planning Commission for fourteen years, I think she said fourteen and a half, listened to her. She knows property. She knows construction. It's been in her family, and she's carried it forward. And if you haven't got the expertise to basically, as with sea level rise, you didn't have the expertise on the commissioners, then bring in the technical people you need to give you input. Thank you very much. Good luck with this. It's big.
Thank you, Jane. Any more online public comment?
Nope.
All right. That will take us to council and staff reports. Do we have any staff reports this evening?
I just wanted to share that we met for the third time with the staff group between Cal Poly Humboldt and the fire district and the city today. We're continuing to work on what would be kind of a scope of services to review fire services around our general plan and potential growth in the community. So I'm hoping to have something a little bit more concrete to report out in May, but I just wanted to share with the council and the community that those meetings are ongoing and that work is continuing.
Thank you. I guess we started at that and this time, so we can start at this and this time. Stacy, if you wanna start us off, and we'll move down with our updates.
Sure, I'll try to keep it brief. We've been here for a while. So I think some good news that some of you would appreciate. I was in a Cal Yimby regional meeting, that's Cal, yes, in my backyard. And one of the topics in there was a discussion on state policy that's being worked on and try to be, trying to be put forth to help increase homeownership opportunities and maybe in different ways than what we're, you know, used to seeing of your standard house. And so I think that that's very encouraging. Our state is seeing that we are, in many regions, built out as far as your traditional neighborhood goes, and yet we still need to provide ways for folks to build equity. And so there will, I do expect in the future that there will be some help with that from our legislature. I also went on a walk-along with one of our community ambassadors, and that was a really great experience. You know, they continue to do good work, and I was happy to be a part of that. And we hosted the Cal Cities Regional Conference here last week, I think, and it was very successful. It seems like, it seems like a long time ago. But, and yeah, we hosted that, and it was a great gathering of different electeds from our region, and that's all I've got.
And you forgot to add that you were up there and helped present the community ambassador program with Fire Phoenix and Sergeant, Sergeant Luke Skown? He is a sergeant, okay. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't giving him the wrong title. And so thank you for doing that as well. And there was a lot of, I know that Trinidad said that they are looking at a similar program, and other cities were very interested in it as well. So thank you for, you know, presenting that to them and leading the way with that. Trying this thing where I go back and reference my notes to be able to give updates. And so just some exciting things that the Rowdy Coast Energy Authority will be celebrating their twentieth anniversary this month, which is really exciting. And that's a long time for a CCA to exist, and RCA was at the cutting edge of that in Humboldt County. Bringing that up here was really, you know, an amazing thing to open up. And then also, they're working, and so if you're interested in any of their rebates, especially for e-bikes, those are gonna be coming back online soon. And they're especially looking at targeting low-income customers and people that actually use bicycling for commuting, not just, I'm gonna go take my e-bike out for fun, to be able to actually work on replacing cars with that. And then also, we received a great presentation from the California Fishermen's Resiliency Association, and I have been continuing my own kind of personal involvement with that, with offshore wind and working with the Core Hub and going to their community benefits meetings. And it's been just super great to hear the feedback from the tribes and local governments about offshore wind. And then I'll add too that we had our Equity Arcata meeting. They had their Home Away From Home event at Wildberries back at the very end of March there. It was a very successful event, and they reached out to a lot of students and provided meals and food bags, so that, great work partnering with Wildberries from Equity Arcata. And, yeah. And just continuing, Equity Arcata is kind of in a process right now of restructuring their board and reaching out to a lot of local stakeholders within the equity realm in Arcata to kind of build up that board and kind of work towards this new vision. So more to come on that in the future. And that's all I have.
So I attended REDAC, Redwood Region Economic Development, and like Sarah, I had an opportunity to receive a Core Hub presentation from Amy Jester on wind. And it was really nice because I was able to connect the pieces because when we were at our conference, Swat's Energy Center, Arnie, was one of our presenters there. So that was a lot of fun. It's really exciting that they're going to be becoming part of that Core Hub, so to participate in the Off-Ward Wind Community Benefits Network. What else is going on? Kuna's getting ready to kick off their participatory budget process. So we have an engagement set up with The Grove. We have another engagement set up with Cal Poly Humboldt at The Comfort Inn. We'll be doing a lot of online engagements to include, just totally forgot the name of it, when you do the little presentation with the post-it notes on there, what is that called?
Shirets.
Not shirets. Anyway, we're just really excited that we hope to have twice as much engagement as we did last time. So, and the city had allocated fifteen thousand, we were able to stretch that budget for Valley West quite extensively, got a whole bunch of wonderful projects. So we expect to be able to do that and some for the twenty-five thousand dollars that's been allocated by the city to bring in beautification, community connectivity. And again, just super excited that, you know, Arcata was the first to ever do the participatory budget process in Humboldt County, and now we're doing the second round. What else is going on? You know, I think that's it.
Well, I wanted to say how much I think that Turner, you know, they came to us and asked us, this is a small city, if we would be interested in being part-
asked us, this is a small city, if we would be interested in being part of them. And I really think I've been, I read in the New York Times how they helped with the homeless housing, figuring out the finances. The way I look at Turner is that it's doing quickly because it's computer-oriented compared to the past. They're doing performance. So they can figure out how much your land is, how much this is going to be, should you have thirty units, should you have forty units, should you have ten units. And I think it's a value, valuable tool. I know Anthony is worried about it, but I just see it as being really valuable and valuable for Arcata, no matter what the project is or where it is. We have a planning applicant. We have a person that's submitted their application for the planning commission. I would request that it's on our next agenda for interview and that if we don't receive any, well, if we receive another person, we will be able to interview them too. But I would like to move that forward because I think it would be valuable to get another planning commissioner. So I know that's up to the mayor to make a decision on. Kimberly, I had no idea that safe parking had been going for another year.
You know, I might stand corrected. My understanding is that they have, moving forward on the grant to renew that for the next year and that, that...
Yeah, the Arcata House Partnership is working on a grant to extend for a year. We don't know if we'll receive that grant. In part, we're waiting on that release from the state right now. But then they'll turn it around quick and it will be reviewed then by the continuum of care.
Okay. Because I was surprised when you said that. It's happened! And I think, oh my gosh, I had no idea.
I jumped ahead of it. Sorry about that.
So the other thing is that I received so many emails about the fact that the I Street gate has gone in on I Street of happiness, that so many people are really happy about that. And being able to assist, like I saw that the phone board members would like to help assist with closing the gate and opening the gate. And that might be a really good opportunity. So there's always discussion about condo.
And they'll be cleaning it up on Saturday. There's the pack-out, clean-out.
Oh, yes. Pack-out will be there.
On South I Street parking lot, right at the front there behind the North Coast Land Trust building, nine AM. They said eight forty-five. Get there early. Sign your little waivers and get your bucket.
Yeah, I plan, I plan on going for that. Something that keeps coming up all the time, we will never have condos. We won't have anything of that nature. And I bring that up at the housing meeting and I would, that Stacy was talking about. And I would really like to figure out how we can find a speaker or two. I think I'm going to start doing research on it, see if I can find somebody that actually could come and talk about it. You know, I know we have in our county, or at least in Arcata, we have the belief that condos are not possible. Yet we do have two condominium developments in Arcata and we have a cohousing. So I think it is possible. And we should look at what the parameters are. I know Fred said it's not, but I just think we have to be more forward-thinking and figure out how to make it work. And we can't just say, oh, interest rates are really high. They may come down. And we'll just have to work with that one way or another. There's concern that Glenn brought up too about the upzoning. And I don't think that's going to be happening immediately. I think that, I checked with one of the planning commissioners about it. I feel like it's something that would be looked at in the future even, that's, but maybe I'm wrong. So I should ask you, David, am I right or wrong?
You're right. It's an implementation measure. It's not proposed to happen now.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to put that out there. I guess that's it.
There is a press conference tomorrow morning at ten-thirty to announce the Carlson Park 2.5 grant for the improvements of the park. That will be the entrance of the park, which is super exciting. It'll also go into the park where there will have ADA compliant, a lookout for those who are disabled. So if you can't get down to the river, you can still check it out. And it'll also be signage and native plants will be planted and non-natives will be removed. And it's going to be a boon for not just, you know, all of Arcata and Valley West, but for tourism. So super exciting. Stay tuned. That groundbreaking will be probably happening June sometime.
Groundbreaking for Carlson Park?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to say summer.
And that press conference, just to clarify, is here though at City Hall, correct? Yeah?
Yeah. And we have discussed already, we've got two grants that have completed 1.5 million of that. And then there will be an announcement tomorrow on the rest.
All right.
Oh, I'm just going to say natives. Native plants always need water for three years. A lot of people think natives never need to be water, but that's not true.
Water for three years. Put it in the budget. Okay. And I just want to add one last thing before we go to dates of future meetings, just to let you know why I will not be at our next meeting. Because I get the wonderful joy of, for the first time since the COVID pandemic, to take my students on a out-of-town field trip to the Bay Area. And I'm very, very excited. So we are going to have a blast. And I will be at the Fisherman's Wharf Hostel with twenty-eight teenagers instead of at this meeting. So don't worry, I'll have help. But I'm excited though. See, I'm excited about that. All right. So that takes us to dates of future meetings, confirming that we are going to have our 2023-24 fiscal year budget study session on Tuesday, May ninth, 2023, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Everybody got that on their calendar? Beautiful. Okay. And with that, we are adjourned.